Recording in progress.
Okay. Well, hello and welcome to the October 5th, 2023, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Noah Levy. And before we get started, as usual, I just want to call everyone's attention to the ways that you can watch or participate in this meeting remotely. That's spelled out on the first two pages of our agenda. In particular, if you are at a computer and following along and wish to participate, the best way to do that is by Zoom. That way, you'll be with us in real time. You can also watch on the humboldt.ledstar.com stream. But just note that that runs a little bit behind, 30 seconds or a minute behind real time. So if you're watching that way and then wish to call in, you're going to need to call in just a little bit sooner than you might think. And with that, I guess I will call the meeting to order and invite you to join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, could we get a roll call of commissioners present, please?
Commissioner Scavdall.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Landry.
Here.
Commissioner Mulder. Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner West.
Here.
Okay, well, we do have a quorum, just barely. I am told that Commissioner Mulder will be here within 10 minutes or so. So, but we can get started without him. Item C is Agenda Modifications. Director, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Chair. There is one item that we would like to remove from the consent calendar and continue, and that's the review and approval of the September 21st, 2023 Action Summary. There is no need to vote on that. Just remove it and we'll bring it back on October 19th.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Well, before we get to the reviewing the consent calendar, I would invite the public to make comments on matters which are not on the agenda tonight. Matters which are before the or within the purview of the Planning Division or the Planning Commission but that are not pertaining to one of the items on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone? Hold on, let me just see what's happening on Zoom here. Is there anyone in the in the audience wishing to, in person, wishing to comment on a matter not on our agenda tonight? Not seeing any hands there. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on a matter that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none there, then we will close Item D, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. That brings us to Section E, the Consent Agenda, which is pretty short tonight. But as usual, I'm going to run through that and see if any commissioners or members of the audience wish to pull any item for questions or discussion. So, we've already heard that the first item, the September 21 Action Summary is removed from consent, and we'll come back next time. The next item would be VIPA Farmers LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Salmon Creek area. This item is just recommended to continue to a date uncertain. So, is there anyone wishing to comment on the continuance of that item? Okay, seeing none, we will leave that on consent. The second item is the Brightview Final Map Subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Is there anyone wishing to comment on that item?
I'm not requesting to pull the item. I just need to disclose that my mother lives close enough to the subject property that she received the notice of public hearing. However, I don't have a financial interest in her property.
Okay. Well, thank you for disclosing that. And that means you're not, there's no need for you to recuse from that item. Great. I do see a hand up. Okay. Well, given that hand, then I guess we will pull this item for discussion later in the meeting. Okay. The last item on consent is Mad River Medicinals Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Dinsmore area. Are there any commissioners wishing to pull that item for discussion or questions? On Zoom, I see the same hand that was up before, but okay, it's just now gone down. I think there may have been a lag.
They put it back up, so.
Oh, they put it back up.
Chair, I might recommend that you ask what they're after so that you can determine whether or not this is for a comment on the consent calendar if they're trying to do something else.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, I guess if you could unmute Mark and Sean so I could just get clear what they are requesting here?
Yep.
Mark and Sean on Zoom, I'm recognizing you. Can you speak up to explain what your hand was indicating and which of these items you wish to pull for, from the consent? Are you there, Mark and Sean? We're not hearing you. It's not clear if you are trying to speak or not. Huh. They look like they're unmuted. Everything should be working, right, in terms of? It shows them as unmuted. Is there any way we can do a check to make sure that Zoom voices are coming through, maybe with a staff person or something?
Yeah, Cade McComara, I'm going to unmute you. Can you speak?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great.
Okay. Mark and Sean, are you still not able to speak? Yeah, okay. I'm going to then recognize 9787. This was, I was asking for hands about the Mad River Medicinals, but if you can clarify, 9787, what item you are wanting to comment on? 9787, can we, can you unmute? Star six? Can we help them unmute? Jeez. Okay, there they are. 9787, go ahead. Can you clarify what you were raising your hand for, please? Huh. I apologize, folks, for this delay, but we're trying to ensure that our Zoom participants and phone participants can be heard when they raise their hand. 9787. They hung up.
They hung up, Chair.
Well.
This is extremely unusual. I hate to say this, but I think that, given the fact that the hand went right back up, we have to honor that as wanting to talk about it. But they're obviously not talking about something.
The, about the Mad River Medicinals.
And.
And the Brightview.
So, we have another hand up for a different number that just popped up?
Okay. Yes, we are still reviewing the consent calendar, but I see the hand up for 2800. Can you please unmute and clarify which item you were wishing to comment on? Phone number 2800, star six to unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you, but there's a serious echo.
Yeah, we're moving away from that. All right. That was frustrating. That was all us. So, I'm thinking that it's.
Well, thank you for calling back from a different line or whatever. You're saying that you were also Mark and Sean and that other number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I did just want to be clear. Were you raising your hand to request to have a discussion of the Brightview Final Map Subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And it was not pertaining, and was it then not pertaining to Mad River Medicinals in the Dinsmore area?
That's correct. This is only about the Bright, whatever it's called.
Sure.
Subdivision that's being put in.
Thank you very much for clarifying. That is, that's your right to pull that from consent for discussion. And so, we will remove that from consent, come back to that later in the meeting after the workshop. Okay?
Okay. I don't understand because I thought we would, you were addressing this early in the meeting.
No, the order of our agenda is that we are, we have the consent calendar upfront, but items pulled from consent are going to be handled later in the meeting after we do the short-term rental ordinance, which is the first item. So.
Okay. Okay. So, what do we just hang, we just hang tight and go through the meeting until you call it back up?
Hang tight.
Okay.
We will plan to get to that no later than 8:30.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I could, just to be clear, that is after the patient-to-patient item.
After the patient-to-patient, oh, it's after the patient-to-patient item. My apologies. It's, it's the, it's actually after the patient. It's going to be the very end of the meeting. I apologize. It will not be at 8:30. It will be probably after 9:00 PM that we get to that. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay. Commissioner Mulder.
But, no, there's no, it's hard to predict exactly what time, so I'd kind of encourage them to follow along for the meeting.
Sure.
Just in case. I would hate for that to say nine o'clock and then we randomly get to it at 7:30, which I don't think is realistic, but just want to throw that out there.
Okay, yeah. Could be earlier than nine, but I thought realistically, given the two other items, it's going to be pretty late. Okay, we are still reviewing consent and we now, yes.
Chair, could we have the record state that Mr. Mulder joined the meeting?
Thank you. Yes. Commissioner Mulder has joined the meeting. Do we need to do another roll call attendance, or can you just?
I have him marked as here.
Okay, he is here prior to the vote on the consent calendar. Okay. So, yes, thank you. Okay. So, with all that, it looks like our consent calendar simply consists of the continuance of VIP Farmers and the approval of Mad River Medicinals. Item three is pulled for a later discussion. Item one is continued to the next meeting. I would welcome a motion to approve the consent.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Landry, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall. Any further discussion on that motion?
Just clarifying, that's with number three pulled from consent?
Yes, that's number three. Brightview is pulled from consent, as is number one.
Yep.
Okay. Well, number one is continued to the next meeting. Anyway, with all that said, can we have a voice vote to approve the consent calendar? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. That brings us to the continuation of the workshop we began at the last meeting on the short-term rentals ordinance. Now, those of you who were following that meeting last time and heard to the end will remember that because our entire review of the item at the first workshop two weeks ago included public comments, and we did, in fact, get through all public comment of those who were present in the room wishing to speak or had raised their hand on Zoom, I closed public comments on the workshop. We did not, at that time, get to have any discussion of it as a commission with the staff. Therefore, the item which we're now continuing tonight is simply going to be, we're not going to take public comment on this tonight. Again, I hope that people understood that coming here. I do want to let you know, at the same time, that this is not the meeting in which any action is going to be taken. There has been a special meeting scheduled on Thursday, October 26th, beginning at 6:00 PM, which will be, as I understand it, devoted wholly to a public hearing on the ordinance. At that time, it will be a public hearing. Public comment will be welcome. That's the date when we may take action tonight. We are just going to have a discussion based on what we've heard and read so far about this ordinance from the public. So, okay. And with that, I will pass it over to Director Ford to start us off.
Thank you, Chair Levy. Laura, if I could, get the share screen. As I open this up, I want to say that there was public comment allowed on this last time, and there have been no changes since then. So, we have not made any changes to this. So, you're looking at the same ordinance this evening upon which public comment was given at the last meeting. Okay. So, the way that I think we normally go through an ordinance is just to go through section by section, and where there are policy decisions that have been made are ripe for discussion. I'll try to frame those for you. Do not hesitate to ask questions as we go through. And you don't need to wait till the end. This is probably best as an interactive kind of discussion. So, with that, you see that we've got the purpose there, which is really to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And that really has to do with identifying, supporting tourism, economic development, protecting housing stock, preserving the quality of neighborhoods, and balancing the needs of property owners, tenants, and neighbors. So, happy to take any comments on that. The applicability is when a dwelling, when dwelling units are used for short-term rentals, and the allowed zones or short-term rentals may be permitted in zoning districts where residential use is a permitted use subject to these regulations. So, one of the ironies here is that if you had a residence in a non-residential zone, the short-term rental could be approved at that location. So, that's, that's what's being said here. So, yes.
Sorry, could or could not be approved?
What's that?
Could or could not be approved?
Could be. Could be approved. So, there is no zoning limitation, no zoning district limitation associated with this. It's really about how the residential unit is utilized.
But the residence would have to be permitted in whatever zone it.
Correct.
Sits, yes.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
So, then we go into a short section on what the application requirements are. And really, it comes down to demonstrating that, who the current owner is, and an affidavit signed by the permit holder or permit applicant confirming delivery of the Good Neighbor Guide, and we'll talk about the Good Neighbor Guide a little bit later, that has been delivered to the nearest 10 dwellings and within 300 feet up and down the street, as applicable. And then evidence that the property owner has, has agreed to allow this on their property. And then, the haul route is a term of art we use, but what that really refers to is where the access is coming across private roads to show what private roads are being utilized. And what we do with that is we notify the property owners along those roads too. And this is referring to when a special permit is required so that there is the opportunity for people who live along the road to be able to express any concern that they may have.
There's probably a detail, but I was wondering if you would consider changing haul route to access road or access route. I think of a haul route as a delivery route, perhaps delivering something from a quarry to a project site or a cement plant to a project site, not a driveway or access. And, and the rest of the document refers to access.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Director Ford, I have a, I have a question. On Section B, the affidavit, which needs to confirm delivery of the Good Neighbor Guide to all neighbors in the closest 10 dwellings and within 300 feet up and down the street, if applicable. This applies to everyone anywhere on any size parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, I guess, I just wonder if that makes sense for, to hold this same standard to widely dispersed houses on large parcels? If it might be one of the places where that, that might be unnecessary or, you know?
Yeah, that, that would be fine. We can, we can amend that to try to determine what that breakpoint would be.
Right. Again, I'm not, I'm not pushing for a particular change right here. I'm just sort of raising that as one of the, one of the provisions that seems like maybe it doesn't make as much sense for every type of rural property as it does for more close-set neighborhoods.
Agreed. Any other questions on that? Okay, so the next one is something that we added in. This wasn't originally part of the ordinance, and it really came out of concern for all the existing operators. And so, what has been done here is we've created a provision that says, "No permits for whole dwelling short-term rentals shall be issued during the first two months following the effective date of this section, but applications from individuals operating existing short-term rentals will be received. Two months after the effective date of this ordinance, the department will issue permits for qualifying locations with existing short-term rentals. An existing short rental, short-term rental shall be determined based upon evidence of operation prior to the effective date of this ordinance. If the number of permits issued for existing short-term rentals exceeds the cap identified in Section 60.05.10.2.1, then no permits will be issued for new short-term rentals until the number of permitted short-term rentals in the county falls below the cap." So, there's a couple of policy decisions here. One is whether or not to recognize existing short-term rentals at all. And obviously, the, the industry itself is very concerned about the fact that they've invested money in their operating businesses and, and do not want to see the possibility that they can't be permitted. And, and then, secondly, is, is what is the date that an existing short-term rental should be determined as having been existing? We used a date that is the safest, the easiest to identify, which is the date of the ordinance. At the Board of Supervisors meeting, there was, at one time, you'll recall, a moratorium on short-term rentals that was established, and, and there was a date of June 8th, 2023, that would have been the, the date of, at least of the moratorium. And so, there was a desire by the board to see that be the date which would determine an existing short-term rental. That date seemed a little bit too arbitrary from a legally defensible standpoint, and so, we didn't go there. But it is possible to use a different date, but probably something that is a little bit further back, maybe 2022, January 1 of 23. But it's, it's, I guess what we're recommending here is the most defensible date.
Are you concerned that having that date will lead to a rush of people to start up in the next couple of months, just so that they can be under that date?
The stories vary about what's happening. After the moratorium ended, using the tracking tool, we've got 32 new short-term rentals popped up on that within a month, within the county. So, that, that is possible. On the other hand, the testimony we're receiving from the operators is that the market's really not there. It's not as lucrative or incentivized as it once was. And so, it's not likely that there is a great demand for a lot of new people to, to jump into this right now. If the market's good, I would say that that would be a big concern. If the market's not as good, probably not as much of a concern. But obviously, when people are looking to make investments and/or are in the process of making investment or wonder whether they should make an investment, when a, a date is on the horizon that may affect that, they're going to be incentivized to either jump or not.
Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair. So, what I heard you say is this is, what's here proposed is the most defendable or defend, for the county to stand behind. And for me personally, I'm just kind of looking at it. If we use a January 1st, 2023 date as an arbitrary date, I don't know if that'd be fair to all those people that spent all of winter and early spring getting their STRs off the ground and technically not legal, but we're working towards something. I couldn't see a flood of hundreds of people jumping in on this personally, but I'm one of five today, so, seven on most days. So, I'm just, kind of just throwing that out there.
Commissioner West.
I do have concerns that we are, have, we have a date in the future, and we are also sort of giving a, a kind of a, a major grace period between now and whatever date that is. It's, we are not going to, if you are already in operation, the cap doesn't necessarily apply. And we, at this time, don't, we have hopes for when we might adopt this, but we don't know when we will adopt this. And to me, that is a little bit at odds with what we're trying to accomplish to have this period of time that, yeah, that you, you can get on board. I also have questions about what is the evidence of operation you anticipate using? Is it if you have rented it one time in the last five years? Is it, is there like a, a time period that you have to show that you're operating or number Is it, is there like a a time period that you have to show that you're operating or a number of visits? I feel like that could be interpreted different ways and have different impacts on how this plays out.
Yeah, I think there it's a good question. We were anticipating that they would just need to demonstrate that they had rented it for a short period of time. And whether it's once or ten times, I don't think we had really defined that. But because if if they've come into operation, typically, it's going to be hard to differentiate between once and ten times.
I don't want to hug the floor, but I do have other questions, but does anybody else have questions? Another question I had around this one. Oh, yes, sorry, I'll speak into the microphone, thank you. Another question I had on this one was whether or not folks paying their taxes and having their business license plays into the consideration for whether or not they are existing operators. If you, in my mind, if you have been trying to play by the rules, that goes a long way versus if you've been ignoring the the rules that are in place and have been an existing operator.
So great question. And that would be clear evidence of of pre-existing operation trying to play by the rules. One of the struggles that we have right now is that the agreement between the county and the and this is what the Tax Collector's Office, not Planning and Building, so I want to be clear about that. And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, it's just two different laws. We'll probably talk about that more later. But is is that like Airbnb, VR, Verbo, they have agreements to just collect the taxes and pay the county, but they won't tell us who they're paying taxes for. So if they've been paying taxes in that manner, we're going to have no record that those folks paid taxes. There is a small minority of people who pay taxes directly to the county, which is really good on them. They obviously have very good evidence that they've been in operation because we we have those records. But folks that have been paying it through Verbo and and Airbnb, unless unless Verbo and Airbnb changed their policy, we're not going to have that evidence.
Really, even on request by a municipality or jurisdiction, they will not break down who that taxes is coming from?
I'm saying this with a smile, but particularly with the municipality, municipality asking for it, particularly when it's not a permitted use.
Particularly when it's what?
Not a permitted use.
Got it, got it.
Commissioner West.
Are there avenues that we could ask permities to show evidence that they've paid the taxes through those sites?
I I think we could.
I mean, it it sounds like if they are going through Airbnb or VRBO, from what I understand, they have no choice but to pay those taxes, from what I've heard. And therefore, showing that they've rented it through those platforms would, I mean, would would effectively be evidence that they've paid taxes, as I understand it.
There there should be receipts there.
Yeah, okay.
I would feel comfortable with receipts. You can run through so many different sites at this time and they have different policies. And to simply have a blanket, you can, if you show you've rented on one of the sites, you are obviously paying taxes.
So
Leaves a lot of room for loopholes.
From a policy standpoint, you're raising a question that I think is worth the commission weighing in on. Is the evidence of pre-existing based upon payment of taxes?
Personally, I like that.
I would support that. I mean, in unless there's a better suggestion of what constitutes valid evidence. But if they've done it in some way, under the table or whatever, and haven't paid taxes like the majority of operators have, I'm not sure that I think they should get that same pre-existing status.
Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair. So this is just a question, maybe even for County Council on this one is I know we have at least one other ordinance where we have pre-existing uses grandfathered in with no requirement of paying taxes. So if we were requiring them showing a payment of taxes for this ordinance, would that in any way be discriminatory towards this industry in comparison to other industries that have been permitted?
Comment on that one. Something about asking somebody that's been operating a business without permits under the radar to prove they've been paying taxes on their unauthorized business seems a little difficult to me, but I might be able to get there, but seems like a contradiction.
In in my mind, they're not unauthorized. We haven't prohibited the operation, we just haven't regulated it. However, we do have regulations around the payment of taxes for those kind of operations.
Commissioner Mulder.
Can I get that information from County Council, please?
So it is two different situations, one in which maybe it's not principally permitted or something that is explicitly permitted. Whereas the ordinance, I believe you're referring to, is the cannabis ordinances that was explicitly banned. And so there's going to be different situations with that, especially with the payment of taxes. I don't know if it'd be discriminatory per se.
Thank you for that. I still kind of am leaning towards where Commissioner Scavdall is at because that's just where I'm leaning towards. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but that's just kind of where I where I'm at at the moment.
I have a couple more comments on this item, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Scavdall.
Okay, so again, with respect to the date, it seems to me that setting a date kind of retroactively is is going to be somewhat difficult. On the other hand, there has been a lot of notice that the county is going to adopt this short-term rental ordinance. So it seems to me that a date current or a date forward could be possible, which would protect us a bit from the fact that this ordinance may extend a while before we actually get a Board of Supervisors approval. So I would be willing to consider at least a date current or date forward for consideration of of that. Even though we won't have the ordinance in place, we can tell the community, we are going to adopt an ordinance and any existing is only going to be considered prior to October of twenty twenty-three or whatever it is. So we're not continuing to exacerbate the problem. One consideration.
So for instance, it could be if if the public hearing on this item before the Planning Commission is scheduled for October twenty-sixth. Just say that could be a date that is put forward as the cutoff.
I'm proposing it.
Yeah.
I don't know what problems that puts out there, but.
That could potentially be a bit more defensible at this point in time. It's hard to say when things will go before the board. Just for a date, due process reasons, cutting things off. Again, the difference between explicitly permitted versus explicitly banned, there's there's slight differences there.
And one other comment for for the director. Just in terms of this timing, the first two months following the effective date, we're going to accept applications. And then you say, then the ordinance reads, two months after the effective date, we will issue permits. I'm just wondering if we want to have space there. So you give sixty days for people to bring in the permits, recognizing some will come in on day sixty. And then if you want to say three months after or some period of time after that, the county will begin issuing the permits, just to give staff some space there, if you need it.
Thank you. That seems practical. Commissioner Mulder.
I would be good with potentially putting in that date of October twenty-sixth. I think that would be something I could agree with. And I do like that three months or some sort of verbiage within three months of effective date. So that way there is, I do like that, giving some leeway so someone doesn't bring this in and be like, well, I turned in my permit application on day sixty and it's day sixty-one, why don't I have a permit? Like, I can see problems with that, so.
Commissioner Scavdall.
And one potential issue is we're not going to know where we are with respect to the cap until the close of the sixty-day period.
Right.
So.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I I like the suggestion that Commissioner Scavdall has put forth.
Okay, sure. I do too.
Okay, Commissioner West.
This is my last question, I think, on this section, and it might be more appropriate to talk about it later. But what, when we're talking about existing operations and we're talking about not just caps, but we're talking about density limitations and the potential limitations we have putting forward, what path do we anticipate using when you have different owners operating in an area that violates what we currently have proposed as our density limit and they are both existing operators?
The intent, the intent here basically is to, if they fundamentally comply with all the other provisions that are non-conforming relative to the cap, density, things like that, they'll get approved. And maybe that could be more clear.
So if, are you're saying that even if they don't meet all of the requirements, they would get approved?
Fundamentally, yes.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding. So if they meet other, you go ahead.
So some of the, that's relative to density?
Yeah.
Relative to separation, relative to the cap. But relative to the road and all the other performance standards, they would need to comply with those?
Right. That's, okay, that's what I was thinking you meant. So where other requirements are met, not related to density or concentration, but where they are in excess of what the stated limits on concentration or density are, the pre-existing ones would be allowed and effectively grandfathered in, as it were.
Correct, that's the intent, and I probably need to do a little work on that.
I think we could make that slightly clearer, but thank you for clarifying. Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
So thank you for those questions, that's kind of the way I read it. The other way, the other thing that I kind of want to remember, we're going to get to, I think, later on, is that these can't be commodities. So say there's a neighborhood that's over-intensified of STRs, but if someone wants to get out of, you know, owning the property, they're not a commodity that could be passed down. So that that was part of the reasoning. For me personally, I think it's okay to have this density grandfathering in because it provides those protections, in my mind, but I could be wrong.
That that they're not transferable.
They're not transferable, although we did, we, at some point in time, we need to talk about transferability to, when we get to that section, to like family members.
Yeah.
But not like, hey, I got this STR and I think it's a great business and now I'm just going to sell it off and then start up like fifteen more in the county and then sell those off.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, that was a good set of questions. Anything more on that provision, that paragraph, or can we let the director proceed?
I just
One more?
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just want to echo
That's what it's for.
Your comments that it could be more clarified, that what the exceptions are.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Great.
One of the things about the these workshops, first with the public and now with the Planning Commission that we found is that they are highly beneficial to kind of fleshing this kind of thing out. So I really appreciate this discussion.
Sure. And and by the way, John, I just, at the last meeting, I don't think we had the updated coastal version of this yet. And I noticed at that time there was an inconsistency in this in this paragraph. The earlier version of the coastal gave the dates January of twenty twenty-two to May of twenty twenty-three. That seems to have been changed in the current, most recent coastal. And maybe that was just a matter of timing of, you know, I just wasn't seeing the most. But in general, if there's any places where, we're reviewing the inland ordinance, right? I mean, if there's any places where there is in fact a difference, a significant difference with the coastal.
Call those out.
Call that out, please.
Sure, thanks. So then we get into permit requirements. And and basically, the objective here and the way this is structured is we are proposing to create a new administrative permit, which is envisioned to be something that could be submitted electronically since we're going to all electronic submittals anyway and would be acted on in a very short period of time. And it's important to point out, I think, that we have taken some things out in order to accommodate that. And one of the things that we were looking at, and this was brought up last time when Mario Carlson made comments from the Department of Environmental Health about the ability to refer permits, about the ability to have other departments review permits. So if we got into a situation where we were looking at doing a higher level of review with different departments, different agencies, this proposal would fall apart. That would be a different level of review, that would basically move everything into a special permit. So I I just want to say that that is very critical. And where the premise behind this is is that these are permitted structures. And permitted structures largely have been reviewed for water and wastewater. And so the idea is that we don't need to re-review what's already been reviewed. Now, is that always, do people always maintain their property? Is everything always in the proper working condition? We can't guarantee that. And if it's a policy decision that we want to make sure that people have everything up to date, if they're not on city water or municipal water and municipal sewer, then that becomes a different policy decision and policy discussion that needs to be made. And maybe I'm getting too far out ahead, but that that was a decision originally. We identified that there needed to be an inspection, there needed to be compliance with Department of Environmental Health, there needed to be compliance with Public Works, and started looking through that. And that could result in like four or five different permits, just to convert an existing residence into a short-term rental. And and so where we landed was, if it's a permitted structure, the presumption is that everything else is permitted. And if that's not a valid presumption, then that's a policy decision.
Commissioner Mulder.
So I'm good with that. From the two here, workshops, I would say, that I went to, one in Southern Hubble and one in McKinleyville, I kind of heard the testimony from a lot of people that their, the margins aren't really large in this STR business. A lot of people are doing this just to be able to maintain owning the property that or the home. So I feel that if we continue to make the permit process more daunting or more expensive, it may make it hard for people to comply. And then we have the same problem we have now with, you know, a bunch of unpermitted uses going on without, because it's, they're priced out of getting a permit. And I would hate to be, you know, I'd hate, I would hate for our policy decision to put too much bureaucracy in the permit process where someone's priced out of a home and not able to rent out a bedroom anymore and no longer there. not able to rent out a bedroom anymore and no longer there. So that's kind of where I'm at.
I have a question, but I don't want to interrupt if anybody else has a thought on that same train.
Go for it.
Okay. My question around this one is, so we assume that they have a permitted dwelling and their water and wastewater is good. Do we look into whether or not they have code violations in other realms as a part of this process, and does that impact the decision?
That's not currently written into the ordinance, but it can be.
I personally find it concerning that you could, and I think it depends on the code violation to a certain extent, but to invite, if you have, codes are there for a reason, mostly for public health and safety, and if you have an active code violation, would be concerned about you inviting people into your home for a business.
If it's the consensus of the commission, that can certainly be added in.
Commissioner Mulder?
I would want to flush out what the code violations would be before I could even weigh in, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but technically, if you change the outlet on the outside of your structure without an electrical permit, that's technically a code violation, the way I've been explained.
I think technically you're right. When I heard Commissioner West's question, the thing that popped into my mind is, is there an outstanding code violation on the property where we're in, and where we're taking an enforcement action? And it's.
In other words, something that's already come to the, to the building department's attention.
Right. And it's unlikely, just in fairness, I know you were looking at the smallest possible violation, but we don't go out and look to see if things like electrical outlets are correct. We, we really are complaint-driven. So I think the, the issue really is, is there a complaint on the property that warranted a neighborhood response? And since I'm speaking and kind of thinking out loud, then you're, they're asking, the applicant would be asking for an additional entitlement, which also may affect the neighborhood when they've already affected the neighborhood with something else.
Commissioner Mulder?
So I'd be willing to discuss that a little bit more, and if there is maybe, I would hate for us to say something about code violations and then we get into the business of neighbors turning neighbors in, like all of a sudden, they don't want this STR to go through, so I know that they did something, maybe they did some minor thing. So maybe if there's existing, pre the ordinance going in, maybe talk about that. But I, look, I'm, I'm just trying to think worst-case scenario.
Commissioner Scavdall?
The requirement is that dwellings shall be permitted or legal nonconforming. To me, and, and I don't think the intent was to go out and inspect these buildings.
Right.
They're permitted structures, but if a permitted building has an active code enforcement case against it, to me, that's not permitted.
Hmm.
That's not a permitted structure, right? If there's a code enforcement case that you did some construction without a building permit, or you have a poor electrical service, or whatever that is, to me, that's, that's not permitted. So I think as the, as the ordinance reads now, gives the county the leeway to not issue short-term rental permits to dwellings that have outstanding health and safety code violations. That's, I think it's, that's a basic statement, it's already in here.
Well, if I may, so you're suggesting that the wording that exists is already sufficient to capture this concern. I, I do want to say that I agree with Commissioner Mulder, that I, I don't want to put a provision in here that could incentivize people being reported for minor stuff that might technically be out of code, but was not a hazard that, or, or a problem that had come on the radar of the county or the neighborhood before that, you know? You know, so something about the pre-existing case or claim of, of a code violation.
So if the, if the sentence were revised, let's say dwelling shall be permitted with no current active code violations.
I think something like that.
You have it covered.
Would, would work.
Yeah.
Through the chair, if I may. Planning and building would not issue a permit unless it was to remedy a code violation. And so there may be some redundancy there if we were to write that into our ordinance for this particular use.
What if it had been permitted previously and then a code violation had come to light later? How?
I, I believe that's where the discussion should focus, is whether or not a violation would occur of a permitted activity, as opposed to whether or not planning and building would issue a permit for something that is not in, or that has a violation or does not meet code requirement.
If I could, I would just say, I think the language that Commissioner Scavdall proposed relative to having an existing, and, you know, the word we normally use is, is confirmed violation. It's not a complaint. It's not an allegation. It's something that there's an active enforcement action going on, or maybe we could just say no active enforcement action. And, and that, that would allow somebody that maybe had a violation in the past, had entered into a compliance agreement, they're resolving it, they're working to resolve it, and, and so there's no penalty there for having been responsive to a code enforcement action.
Okay. Commissioner West, did you?
Yeah, along those same lines, I think I, my, my original intent was, you can rectify a code violation, you can fix a code violation, my intent isn't for you to not be able to get a permit because you had a code violation, or rather, an active code violation that hasn't had a resolution yet, is where my concern lies. So whatever path we have forward for that, I'm good with it.
So are we, are we in consensus that it would be dwellings shall be permitted or legal nonconforming with no active code violations? Is that kind of what I?
You know, I don't know where we're going to put it yet.
Okay.
Because it's really not in the section that we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
But we, we will work on doing that as being probably a performance standard for approval of the permit.
Yeah. And, and I think maybe not for this one, but for some other things, when something comes up, that's an idea that we might want to consider modifying if it's, if it's not clear what the best way to do that is, what the wording is, or even if we necessarily agree on it, I think we can sort of table it, you'll take note of it, and perhaps that can be brought back as a, as an option or an alternative to consider when we see a revised version.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so we don't have to resolve every question precisely, necessarily.
Correct. So just the, probably one of the main points with this is the administrative permit versus the special permit.
Yeah.
If, if the application, the short-term rental's able to comply with all of the provisions in the ordinance, they're a administrative permit. If they're not able to comply with some of them, not all of them, but some of them, they can get a special permit, apply for a special permit for. There's an additional cost to that, there's additional time to that, but it does give people a pathway where they can't or don't want to, or don't feel like they need to, not because they're indifferent, but because of circumstances, completely comply with the provisions that are in the ordinance. And, and so one is very compliance with the requirements, very low discretion, no discretion. The other is, okay, not complying with the, the requirements, increased discretion, increased public involvement. And, and so that's the basic philosophy here, and you'll see how that plays out in the ordinance as we go through it.
Absolutely. Really support that, you know, the innovative approach you took to creating this, this permit pathway. But since we are at that point about a special permit, where a special permit is, is required, would the path be for that to go before a zoning administrator, before the planning commission? What's, what would that look like?
Probably what, our normal rule of thumb is, if it's going to generate a lot of, and, you know, this is neighborhood interest, it's coming to the planning commission. If it can be sent out and there's notices that have been sent out and the neighbors have a certain concern that can be worked out, it may go to the zoning administrator. But I know personally that the zoning administrator does not want to say no to a bunch of neighbors, and, and really tends to defer those to the planning commission.
Sure. But it, it seems to me, even though there's a real effort to try to make a streamlined pathway for many applicants, there's going to be probably a fair number that don't, that have to go the special permit route, that don't necessarily have any neighborhood concern or controversy, they just don't check all the boxes.
Right, right.
Hopefully those could be still pretty smooth, not, not as, you know, not as smooth as the administrative, but wouldn't necessarily have to all come to the.
That is correct. And that is kind of the beauty of a special permit. But as the commission knows, you review a lot of special permits currently that are related primarily to cannabis right now, and some of those could be approved without a public hearing. But one of the things that relative to cannabis, we've decided to do is that they all, if they're a certain size, they just automatically come to the planning commission, whether they are controversial or not.
Hmm.
So moving on down, these are findings for the special permit, and they're, they're really that short-term rental would not result in significant adverse effects on the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and would not result in significant adverse effects on the quality of the neighborhood. And then within that are special noticing requirements to all notices and occupants of property, access through shared private road system, back to Commissioner Scavdall's point, that haul route is not a commonly used term throughout the ordinance. So we will make sure those are corrected. So then permit term for short-term rentals. All short-term rental permits shall lapse two years after the effective date of the permit, unless the following or requirements are met. A, the permit holder shall submit a statement of continued operation as provided by the planning and building department, and there are no outstanding violations associated with the permit.
Commissioner Scavdall?
So after that, two years, assuming conditions A and B are met, what's the term of the permit going forward? Is there a no term, or do they come back every two years? Every two years is the intent. You're right, that should probably be more clear. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mulder?
The other part I wanted, I mean, I just want to clarify and flush out here is every two years, but what about those pre-existing operations that are still over the density levels, or could potentially be over the density levels? What would be the renewal process for them? Would they still fall into that original process of getting approved?
It would not be our intent to change anything for them, that's just the same process, and as long as they continue to operate in compliance and there were no violations, then they would simply be extended.
Is there any way we could flush that out in some type of wording, just so that way, if someone was existing right now and they got a, say they got, we go through this and they get a permit, and then I would hate for someone else to read this like, oh, well, you know, after two years, your permit expires, and I don't see anything in here that says that just because you were grandfathered in that you can get renewed again, so sorry, you can't have a permit. I would hate for that to happen.
Yeah, we can strengthen the language in that previous section.
Just another question here. Because I am a bit concerned that some of these permits are going to go idle, but the permit holder's going to renew, even though they're not perhaps renting them out anymore, they're just holding their permit. And a statement of continued operation seems like a simple way to just continue your permit. So do we need any evidence of active use of the permit in the last two years or year to continue those permits?
Commissioner Mulder?
So early on in the conversation, we were saying evidence of, of use is showing, is one day or 10 days, it didn't make a difference. So would you be okay with one day within those two years being evidence of active use? Because it's the same standard we're granting. I wouldn't want to change the standard of allowing someone a permit to continue operation of a permit. I'm just, that's where I'm trying to look at that part.
Yeah, I don't know if you're asking the question to me, but, yeah, I'm just, yeah, my concern is that people just hold these permits, and they're taking away from the permits that are available under the cap. So that, that's my only concern, is that somebody might just hold them and not, and not use them. Maybe that's a rare occurrence, maybe it's not going to happen, but it would seem to me that some evidence, it would be pretty simple for them to come home, to come in and show the days that the home was rented, or some evidence would be appropriate. Number of days, I don't know. I, I get the slippery slope of trying to set a minimum number of days, but no rentals in a, in a year would seem to be not active.
Commissioner Mulder?
So if we put in something in there, permit holders shall submit a statement of continued operation, showing proof of at least one day rental per year, some, somewhere along those lines? I'm just, I'm, I'm throwing out ideas, like you, you mentioned a really good problem, and I'm like, just trying to scratch at the surface, like, hey, how can we, how can we solve this problem without making it too challenging?
Yeah, and I agree that there's some logic to being consistent between what's demonstrated pre-existing use and what's evidence of continued operation. But, you know, in a case where we're not absolutely clear right now, we can, if we're not absolutely clear, we can at least for now just sort of flag this as something that probably needs to have something there, and see what the staff comes back with, if you guys are okay with that?
I am. It's not my job to solve the problems, just create them.
Right. Exactly. We'll try to be helpful where we can, but we can't promise. Okay.
Appreciate that. I think that's a, will be a helpful clarification. So moving down from that, there's a section addressing violations and continuous use of a short-term rental without resolution of the violations of this section may result in code enforcement action, permit suspension, or permit revocation. And then we have suspension or revocation consistent with the procedure set forth in 312-14 of the zoning ordinance, the short-term rental permit may be suspended or revoked for violations of the short-term rental ordinance and/or violations of permit terms or conditions. Now, this is something to pay attention to, because currently, the zoning ordinance does not have a suspension provision in it. And the importance of a suspension provision is that it can immediately take effect, and the idea here is the director can say, you've been operating in violation, you've not listened to the warning letters that we've provided, so you can no longer operate until this is resolved. And that is actually ironically something the, I was going to report on this later, but the Board of Supervisors. but the board of supervisors directed us to do on Tuesday is to develop suspension procedures within the zoning ordinance. And that was primarily related to cannabis violations. So this is kind of a new mechanism that's going to be developed. It's proposed here, but it's going to be developed anyway to allow a more immediate stop using it. And then the, obviously the revocation procedure is the most severe remedy and that is done by the board of supervisors. That's not something that the department can do. That can only be done by the, the board. I'm seeing heads nod north and south, so I, I'm anticipating there's some concurrence with that?
Yes, but if I may just ask a quick question that, about violations that I forgot to ask about the existing operations provision. Obviously for existing operations, it's, it's different because there was not a permit process in place to violate. I do however note that quite a few people in our letters we've received have said, you know, please give, you know, grandfather in or pre, pre-approved status to existing operations in good standing, but not the ones that have a history of complaints. I don't know how many there are that have a history of complaints that have risen to the department's notice, but I'm just wondering if, if that's an exception to that pre-existing that we want to consider adding there.
We, we could look at that. I, I want to talk to county council about that and I don't want to throw it at them like here on the dais.
A flag just for, for something to think about.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Could that verbiage be violations as opposed to complaints?
Well, that would be better, but I'm not quite clear how violations would apply to the pre-exist, to the case of pre-existing operators when there wasn't this ordinance to comply with, you know, so.
Is it, is it too big of an assumption to think that they would be coming into compliance in obtaining the proper permits and things as part of their grandfathering in if something wasn't, you know, up to snuff and?
That they would, yeah. That makes sense.
If I could jump in, part of the struggle here in my mind is that all of the existing short-term rentals are violations.
Right.
The only difference between those that are in code enforcement and not is because people have complained.
You had a thought, Commissioner Mulder?
It was along those lines. It would, I was going back to the workshop that took place in McKinleyville and there was a lady in there that gave testimony that she wasn't able to operate because her neighbor got mad at her and she was technically in a code enforcement violation and that was the only difference between her technically operating that day and somebody else down the street operating was just because of being turned in. So I agree that it would be good to get county council to weigh in and bring something back that flushes that out because that would be a bummer for, for us to set a policy and then someone could be retaliatory and get a code violation because I guess I would ask this question, this is bringing up a question through the chair, the director. Technically, if someone called into the planning department tomorrow that, because they didn't like an operating STR and made a complaint, that could turn into a code in violation, a code violation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Commissioner West.
I read a lot of the same, I'm sure we all did read a lot of the same comments and what stuck out to me was often the noise associated with. So I'm looking forward to us talking about the noise section and maybe being able to address some of those concerns as we move forward for.
Sure. Okay. Didn't mean to derail us. Director, please proceed.
Thank you. So we're now moving into something that we also added in response to a lot of testimony that we heard and we've kind of created two different kinds of short-term rentals. And one is what we're calling a home share. And this is where somebody continues to dwell in the home and rent out rooms within the home. And, and so we're calling that a home share rental. And some of the ideas behind this is that if somebody's living there, it's far less likely to have adverse effect on the neighborhood because the, the resident, the occupant, the owner probably isn't going to put up with a lot of stuff going on that is detrimental to the neighborhood. And secondly, it addresses the other concern about the loss of residential units because you now have somebody continuing to be a full-time resident in the home. And so they are intended to have much less restrictive standards and don't need to comply with the cap, don't need to comply with the distancing requirements and, and basically are something that are, are just being allowed, still need to provide for the protection to the, the neighborhood, but basically it's, it's a, they, there's less requirements on it. So with that being said, I'm just going to run through them. And this is a section that you'll see all of them, the standards for home share rentals, health and safety standards, exceptions to C and D below, maybe sought with a special permit, but A and B above, you don't get to deviate from. And you know, A is dwellings are permitted and then fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors maintained in a working order. Solid waste, recycling and compost, need to take care of trash.
Want to jump in now?
Then C is track or access and the road must be a category three and maximum overnight occupancy is not to exceed two per bedroom plus one excluding children under 12.
Commissioner Mulder has his hand up.
So I just, going back to a note that I have on B, solid waste, recycling and compost. I know there's a lot of areas in unincorporated area of Humboldt County that don't have access to solid waste and recycling. So I just wanted to clarify what type of evidence is needed that that's done weekly.
What's, just what's their plan? They going to have six trash cans, numbers completely arbitrary, you know, it's going to be collected, it's going to be self-transported to the transfer station, you know, whatever it is. They have a compost pile that's 300 feet outside of their, away from their house and, and they, they continually compost and use that to, to garden. That's all good.
So just clarify with the plan. It doesn't mean that the truck has to come pick it up, you just have to have a plan in place.
You just have to have a plan.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The owner or operator attests that that will happen.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And then, yeah, I went through the access and overnight occupancy that, the, the access obviously for, has been a concern. This was originally, we identified a category four road and we reduced it to a category One of the, there's, there's some options to this. The primary concern is having public out on very narrow roads where there may be compromised emergency response and, and maybe have people lost out in areas.
They have people what?
Lost.
Ah, yeah.
You know, I, I don't know that anybody has a, a short-term rental in an area that people get lost in, but that some of the roads are, are interesting to navigate.
Of course, for some travelers, that's part of the charm. But just to be clear, C and D, access and maximum overnight occupancy, those are the standards that have to be met for administrative permit. If you're not on a category three road, let's just say.
Right.
You're not prohibited from doing this, but it would require a special permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
So moving on to protecting the neighborhood quality and public nuisance standards, the, one of the, the differences here is going to be that there is a resident caretaker that resides within the dwelling. And then maximum noise level allowed in all outdoor areas and indoor common areas of the property are 65 dB during the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM and 60 dB between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And I know that there's some comments, some questions on that.
So I think it's generally for all, all three, A, B and C, these are sort of, I think the meat and potatoes of what I've seen people complain about when they have a short-term vacation rental next to them. And I was curious, I think my first question is how, how are these enforceable? So like if you have, if, is it if you exceed the 65 dB that you are in violation of your permit? Is that what our line of thinking for this?
You know, there's a, a balance with respect to noise and there's two different ways to try to approach it. And the way we've tried to do here is to put very prescriptive standards on it that could be measured. The struggle with that is, is that by the time we find out about the complaint, the noise is not going on anymore. And, and so the other issue is, is it a reoccurring problem within that short-term rental? And, and so part of this is really to let people know that there is the need to respect a certain maximum noise level. And that would include, and you'll see this later, but this provision would also be provided in the Good Neighbor Guide. So then the way that this would really be enforced is that if a particular short-term rental, if we got two or three complaints about it, in, at least in the, the short-term rentals, we would then require them to have a noise monitoring device on site. And there are those devices available that then identify, it's like, okay, you're setting off the, the alarm with this. And so that, that's a clear violation.
Yes, go ahead.
That one is, it does have some metrics available to it. I am curious, I am support of these three. I'm just curious how, how it actually plays out because how do you prove whether or not a resident caretaker is there during the time that guests are there? And how do you prove the person that's parked in the street is a part of the short-term rental and not a guest of somebody else? And it just seems like there, I'm, I'm curious how your team and the county anticipates addressing those challenges.
So unfortunately, it will, it largely comes down to us receiving complaints and then monitoring the site. I mean, the first thing we do is talk to the caretaker operator or the applicant. And if there's an explanation for what the neighbors are experiencing that they're complaining about. And if there is, and that can be corrected, then frankly, it would be done. If it's a pervasive problem, we would monitor, we would go by and, and look at it and, and document the information that, that we observe. I, I mean, that's as much as can be done. We're, we will not inspect, go by and inspect these to make sure that the resident caretaker is there. I mean, the presumption is, is that they're there. If a complaint comes in that this was approved as a home share and we're finding out that it's being rented out, the entire unit's being rented out and it's in violation of this, that the resident caretaker is never there and we demonstrate that, basically the, the permit's going to get revoked because it was approved under, with false information.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just comment on that too. I think noise is going to be the, it's the challenge, right? And so it's amplified music. I saw some people commented on fireworks, which I'm not a big fan of, so. I suppose, you know, One Avenue is a, is a police complaint or a police report if, if a neighbor calls about noise or something, that would be evidence. I don't know if we could do something to, I, I struggle with trying to keep this ordinance streamlined and de minimis and not piling on more and more layers of stuff. If it did say no fireworks allowed in short-term rentals, I would be okay with that though.
I'd be okay with that. I mean, my comment on this is I'm no sound engineer, but, so I don't know exactly what 60 decibels versus 65 decibels is, but I'm struck by the fact that, that dropping it down to 60 during the quiet overnight hours doesn't seem all that quiet compared to 65. And maybe we want to consider lowering that. And the other one I would say, which was reflected in at least a couple of the comments I read is why not make it 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM? That would be more standard for what quiet hours are in hotels or public spaces, things like that, you know? So 6:00 AM seems awfully early and, and 60 decibels overnight seems kind of loud.
Commissioner Mulder.
So just wanted to add in here, I, I don't disagree with your eight to 10 or 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, however you look at it. To the noise thing, I hear all the time, you know, noise, noise, noise. But if there isn't a miserable, I mean, if we have a miserable metric for a violation, I would sure hope that we would have evidence of that being broken before there's a violation issued. I mean, we could say that there's been numerous complaints and put in the noise monitor things, but I just, I want to be careful there. And then also think rural properties, say there's a rural property and even a one acre place, half acre, someone's to make extra money bringing in wooden cutting firewood there. Technically running a chainsaw could be over 65 decibels. So has nothing to do with the short-term rental, but I just, I want to think about when we're talking about these different metrics and rules that we're also thinking of like rural properties.
Yeah.
Where, you know, your neighbor's a little farther away, so.
Agreed.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do some work on that. Parking, just one off-street parking space per rented bedroom. And where legal on-street parking is available, one on-street parking space may count towards the minimum number of parking spaces required. Obviously the objective there is to not have cars lining up on the street.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes. Commissioner West.
With that, so to make sure I understand it correctly, that would mean that the vacation rental would have, would be able to park one car on the street total?
Yes.
And that includes for events? Or like visitors? I get that's.
So I, you know, it's not written in here. I don't think we envisioned there being events associated with home shares, but I, I think we probably should make that clarification because we are making, we did create a provision for events in the short-term rentals. And, and that is, you know, quite a, frankly, a pretty good sized crowd that would not just be able to fit in one parking space unless somebody brought a pretty large bus.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
I can see hypotheticals of like during graduation time at Humboldt NCR where lots of families are from out of the area, having celebrations at the short-term rental. That seems like that's going to happen.
And that could even be in a home share rental, not just the whole, yeah, I mean.
I'd be, I'd kind of suggest caution about. I'd be, I'd kind of suggest caution about limiting rent, events in home share rentals. The home occupant themselves is going to have events. So how are you going to distinguish between the bedroom renter and the homeowner?
Yeah.
Whose event is what? I just think that's going on a difficult pathway.
I tend to agree. I mean, and I will note again that they can get an exception to, to the parking limitation with a special permit if that's foreseeably a use that would exceed one parking space. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure about whether we put in something for events in the home shares.
I'm struggling to comply with some of these things in my own house, so. Trying to think about how, you know, a home share rental would be, right?
Yeah.
So.
I just want to jump in and say, if we are at the end of the discussion of that section, it might be a good time to take a short break. If we were about to, if we were ready to move on to the short-term rentals, which has its own whole set of things to discuss, I usually call for a break around this time, but let's see if we can be back in less than ten minutes, you know? But what time is it? Yeah, it's seven thirty-three. I mean, let's get going by seven forty-three at the latest, okay? Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll wait until it turns seven forty-three. But not a minute more. Okay, it's seven forty-three, so let's get back into it. And I do just want to mention that we, we have one more public hearing to get to as well as one item that was pulled from consent. So I think we need to try to wrap up this discussion starting at eight-thirty, no later than eight-forty-five.
I would advocate since there are two now, now two items.
Yeah.
Probably cut it off at eight-thirty.
Be done by eight-thirty, okay. I think, I think we've got to try to live with that, so.
We're, actually, we may be on course to do that.
What's that?
We may be on course to do that.
Yeah, okay, great.
So to get the screen share with the chair's permission?
Yes.
So next, as the chair mentioned, is the provision for short-term rentals. These are units that are, the whole unit is rented out. So short-term rentals are prohibited in the following types of dwellings, where there's a recorded limitation identifying that it can't be used for a short-term rental because it is restricted to affordable housing or for some other residential-related use. When it is a unit that was approved under SB nine or the California Home Act. And many of these are also, the prohibitions are also included within the accessory dwelling unit, ADUs permitted after January first of 2020, can't be used as short-term rentals. And then alternative owner-builder dwellers, dwellings permitted pursuant to the alternative owner-builder provisions of titles of the Humboldt County Code shall not be permitted as short-term rentals. It's important to note that these provisions are more courtesy informational items than restrictions because these restrictions already exist. And so I just, I just, particularly the alternative owner-builder and the ADU consistently come up as being concerns, why are you limiting that? And with respect to the ADU and the SB nine provisions, that state legislation was enacted to encourage and protect housing stock. And so it has specific provisions in there that it can't be used for anything else. There are opt-out provisions, the county did not choose that, the county chose to implement those state provisions. And so for ADUs approved after January one of 2020, they're, they're not eligible to be used as short-term rentals unless we go back and do the opt-out provisions and change the ordinance. But it's important to balance an understanding, an important understanding here, is that what we're trying to do here is protect housing stock. So it seems, well, I'll just leave it at that.
I saw Commissioner West's hand up first.
I had a question about what I think is probably the recorded limitation section. We had some folks write questions about whether or not like a CCNR limitation would, would like to see a CCNR limitation. So would you interpret a CCNR to be a recorded limitation?
No. We do not enforce CCNRs. It's something there's an agreement either through the state or primarily through the county whereby we entered into an agreement with somebody to provide housing, gave some concessions in an exchange that houses required to be used as a residential unit.
I, I guess the question is why, if, if evidence is presented that shows that the CCNR prohibits the use of a house as a, as a short-term rental, is that not something we, we want to pay attention to?
In no other case do we pay attention to that.
Okay.
That is a private civil matter.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So.
They could bring, they could bring a civil case, they could sue each other, basically.
Exactly.
Okay. But it's not something that we...
It's not, we do not enforce CCNRs under any circumstance.
Okay. Commissioner Mulder.
So I just wanted to note, I mean, there's a lot of letters and especially the alternative owner-builder. I just wanted to piggyback and make sure I understood the last time we had this workshop, the AOB dwellings may, may be permitted after the fact pursuant to the building code and effective the time of permit issuance. I just want to clarify that my understanding was if someone had a house permitted under AOB, they could go in and go through the permit process to make that a traditional permit and then in turn be able to apply for a permit for an STR. Is that still correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions about this, more than we probably have time for, honestly. But first of all, I just want to note that these apply to the short-term rental section, not to the home share rentals, correct?
That's the way it's written, that is correct.
So speaking of AOB in particular, I don't see this as prohibiting a resident of an AOB house to use their residence as a home share rental.
I think that's something we need to look at.
Is that just an oversight?
I think it's an oversight.
Oh. Okay.
The, the home share was actually a pretty late addition.
Yeah.
To this, so I, I think we do need to take a look at that. I'm not sure, obviously, the accessory dwelling unit would not apply with a home share because that's a, well...
Well, actually, I was going to ask the same question about that.
Yep, we need to look at that.
If somebody's living in it, if it's not renting the whole unit, but part of it's being used.
Somebody's living in a ADU and they want to rent out one or two bedrooms.
I mean, ADUs are small, but...
Yeah, we need, we need to look at the implication, the legal implications of that.
Okay. The other, if I may, I wish I had it in front of me, I'm sorry that I don't, but there's a letter, a couple of letters actually from John Roder that I thought made a particular, a point worth discussing regarding AOBs. I'll probably get it wrong, but the gist of what he was saying is that in the AOB code, there are two exceptions under which somebody not the owner can live there. One is if it is brought up.
I, I think if, I read that.
Yeah, you know what I'm, okay.
Yes.
The whole harmless agreement is where I'm going.
And I think that that's a misunderstanding of the code. That's when the property changes hands.
When it changes hands.
Not changing occupants.
Okay, that is a different matter.
Changing occupant is the term that's used, but it's intended when, because only, late, earlier in that provision, is, the AOB can only be occupied by the owner. Owner, alternative owner, builder. That's the intent.
That's the intent.
Okay. And so...
But what about long-term rentals?
They can't be used for long-term rentals technically.
Technically. Okay, they are used that way, but that's not allowed, I guess, is what I'm...
It's not allowed under the ordinance and one of the struggles that, you know, we're grappling with right now is that historically we have not completely fulfilled that particular provision that you're, that Mr. Roder brought up. And we are now requiring people to sign an agreement and record the notice on the property saying that they, that this is an AOB. And that it, it can't be rented out, it can't be used as a short-term rental. You have to advise future owners that this was approved as an AOB, which did not include structural review.
I'm, I'm open to exploring what pathways there might be for...
I think the one thing I would offer to you is that if the planning commission is interested in entertaining alternative owner-builder, the only pathway is to reopen the owner-builder discussion. And that, I'll, that's a slippery slope.
Okay. Thomas.
As, as someone that, being as you brought up the AOB thing, as someone that followed that whole hearing, I would highly recommend, if you were interested in opening up that, potentially asking to open up that, to watch the whole hearing and make your own feeling or your own, but from my understanding, the way I watched it, it was very, almost didn't go through. And that's my perception, I could be a hundred percent wrong, but I would, I would highly recommend that you watch that hearing before nudging down that way. That would be my...
Sure, I'll take that advice.
Just a clarification question.
Commissioner West.
What, what hearing are you referring to, Commissioner Mulder?
I have no idea what date it was. There was a hearing before the Board of Supervisors sometime in the last two years that the AOB, this AOB policy was done, and I think it was probably more like in the last six to twelve months because it had to include the ADU thing, if, if memory serves, but I could be wrong.
There's some more questions on that. We're going to move to short-term rental permit limitations. And this is where we, the first thing we come to is the cap. And we see that not more than two percent of the housing stock may be permitted as short-term rentals in the greater Humboldt Bay area, short, short-term rental cap area, which is comprised of the following community plan areas, Trinidad, West Haven, McKinleyville, Fieldbrook, Glendale, Blue Lake, Arcata, Jacobi Creek, Freshwater, Eureka, Fortuna, Hydesville, Carlotta, and the Rio del Scotia community plan area. So this is a little bit different than it was originally written because originally it was looking at a cap of units in the entire county. And one of the things that we clearly heard is that one size does not fit all in Humboldt County. And so why are you trying to protect the more rural areas so much with a cap? And so what we did is we defined the cap areas being that area where housing stock is at a premium to support jobs and growth within the, kind of the more developed areas of the county. One of the things that I've heard is that there are other areas of the county that are interested in seeing the cap applied. So it's not a ubiquitous understanding that all rural areas should be exempted. I think many people, particularly like in Willow Creek and areas even on the north coast, would, would like to see the cap applied, while many others are, really think that no cap should exist. So I think that we put the cap at two percent, and I think in the numbers that are presented to you in the attachment, that our current number of short-term rentals is about at 1.66%.
Commissioner West.
I read a comment from the Realtor Association recommending that we look at a two percent per community planning area instead of, so it would be, you know, right now, we have community planning areas that are disproportionately affected by the vacation rental, some of them, I believe, if we looked at the numbers, if I remember me right, maybe six percent in some areas and much lower in other areas. Did staff explore doing it by planning area?
We, we did not look at that or examine that. That can certainly be done.
I think if you go at it by planning area, you're not going to be able to hold to the two percent cap in every planning area. That's going to, or you're just basically saying there's going to be a moratorium for a long time in some of those areas. Just another way of putting it.
I, I think there's, there's at least some areas where, you know, people, you know, the Trinidad area, West Haven, things like that, where, where they're already feeling like they're, they're not happy with the neighborhood concentration limits as they are. And, you know, they, they feel like, why mess, and some people are saying, you know, there's a greater concentration in certain areas than others, and that's the way it's kind of worked out, that's what people are used to. So I think if you did, if you enforce the cap by planning area, that, that could run afoul of some of those concerns. But it's not a crazy suggestion.
I was just curious how other commissioners felt about that one.
Yeah, yeah. Other thoughts?
I don't know, the cap, the cap one is specifically very challenging for me, reading through all the different comments and going to the different workshops I went to, it's kind of all over the place and it's really, really hard to fully get a grasp of it. And I, I don't know, I, I could personally see maybe a little bit more than two percent. I mean, I, but that might not be okay with everyone else. So as written, I think I'd be more supportive than trying to do, I understand the idea behind the different community plan areas, but I think, as I ever said, it would just, we would have a lot of, have more moratoriums in areas. I don't know what the right answer is.
I'll, I'll, I guess, just add that I, for me, the two percent is already stretching it on protecting our housing stock in Humboldt County, so I personally wouldn't be in favor of going above two percent as a cap.
Mr. Chair, I would second that, that thought.
Thank you. Well, okay. Any other thoughts on the, that cap provision at this time, or should we, should we move on? Moving on.
Okay, so we come to another one that gets a lot of attention, which is that they're non-transferable. Short-term rental permits shall not be transferred between property owners. And part of the objective here is that they not become commodities and that, you know, not become a, a permanent entitlement. It's something that somebody can use a residence for as, as part of their, their useful life or occupation in doing that, but then when it's done, it's done. And that achieves two things, one is that relative to the cap it allows other people to participate. Secondly, it stabilizes or is intended to stabilize property values because if something becomes a short-term rental, has a commercial value on it rather than a residential value, that price then tends to go up and tends to affect housing prices. And that, that is one of the things that's a concern here, is, is that we're trying to protect housing availability and part of that is cost.
Commissioner Mulder.
I remember we, it was brought up the last time we had this workshop, and I've heard from other people, is there any way, well, I mean, first off, would the commission be willing to entertain some sort of a legal pathway for people to pass down to kids or family members? And the, I, I don't know, just I remember we kind of scratched that surface and didn't really dive in. Me personally, I would be, I, I think it'd be great for someone to be able to pass something down to their kids or a relative if they didn't have kids, but it would have to be, you know, direct family members, not like a friend of, and then so I'd just like to, if, if people are interested, maybe direct staff to entertain some language there, options.
Chair, wasn't that already a provision that is permissible, like that is the only way? That was, okay.
Nope, I think.
I am missing, misunderstood that.
Well, clearly the property can be passed on to family members, just not the.
Right.
The short-term rental permit, that wouldn't permit a family member from either selling or renting as a long-term or reapplying.
Right.
For a short-term rental.
I mean, as I understand it, as written, yes, of course it can pass to your family members, but even if it's your family member, even if it's through inheritance and not sale, the permit would lapse, they would have to reapply. That's, is that, that's how it's written now, correct? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would also entertain the, making, and I mean, I totally get the importance of this, and I think in general it should be a pretty, we should have a barrier to selling these to others, but I do think that I would entertain a, an exception for, for family members. If others agree.
I guess I'm referring to some of the testimony we heard in regards to, the whole reason why I'm doing this is so that, yeah.
There's quite a few. Commissioner West.
Personally, I do not support opening up that exception. I feel like you, it's a slippery slope and you start dancing into the commodificate, you are turning the permit into a commodity by passing it down to your family members, and I don't support that.
Commissioner Mulder.
So, I hear that and I hear that, oh, they could reapply, but with this, the 2% cap thing, that's kind of my thing is, I, I'm, I'm envisioning like someone like, hey, I bought a couple of properties, I fixed them up, I made them STRs, I created security for my children, or only one child, and I should, I would like to be able to pass that down, just like any other business type thing, to pass that down. And that's, that's where my comments are coming from, and I, I'm, I'm totally fine with not, it not being the will of the commission, but I just wanna make sure that I express that that's where my thoughts are coming from.
Yeah. Well, I guess we don't have clear consensus on this. It's, it's an idea that.
So we can bring, I mean, depending on what you would like us to do, we can bring back options. And sometimes we put options in a text box that you can choose A, B, or C. But I'm kind of sensing that there's, there's not a clear consensus here right now.
Well, I, I'm certainly not trying to ram anything through over the objection of even one of us, but since we're not making decisions tonight, and we are gonna be looking at some revisions, as you say, sometimes there are a couple of alternatives that, that are then put to an actual vote when we see what the language is, you know? And I, I, I would suggest that we could have that option to consider.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to consider it as an option, I'd like to, you know, we can hear more about it during the next public hearing.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we've heard a lot about housing stock and availability of housing stock and tying up a short-term rental property for generations just doesn't seem to me to be addressing the housing stock issue, and this is one area where we could address that.
Okay. Well, I think enough said for now, we've sort of aired it out. Okay, thanks though. Yeah, I do too, good, good discussion. The next provision has a fair amount of comments as well.
Yeah, the per-person limit, and we put down five, completely arbitrary number. And the comments on this go both ways, very divergently, they're like vectors into space. Yeah, and I don't care what the number is, I think you're gonna have a really hard time managing this. Five for me, five for my wife, five for my trust, five for my LLC, five for my corp, on and on and on. So, whether it's two, three, or five, I think we're gonna have a hard time really knowing who owns what and how many they own.
Commissioner West.
For me, five is, is too much, I would prefer to see it lowered, a number lower than five for the reasons that Commissioner Scapdall was suggesting, that the higher the number, the easier it is you make it to diversify that. I also would be interested in seeing some language that helped to clarify the ownership. I saw one public commenter who noted that another entity had, had required the applicant to submit the name of the owners or if it was a business entity to submit all of the, the people associated with that corporation, which would help provide some clarity on specifically who is a party to each of these permits.
I would like to agree with everything Commissioner West just said. I know it can't be bulletproof, very sophisticated operators can make shell corporations that are hard to penetrate, but I think the number ought to be lower than five. And I do think we ought to have something in there that tries to confirm that it's not, that there aren't multiple companies or trusts controlled by the same person doing it. Commissioner Mulder.
So, how, I'm just sitting there, I hear everything, and I don't disagree with some of your theories. But there's a lot of single-member LLCs that are held by LLCs, so like, how deep into the woods? So say there's five layers, you know, how deep into the woods, like, would you be accepting if, you know, proof of ownership is LLC A is a single-member holder for LLC B? Or are we wanting to go all the way down until it's a real person? Hypothetically.
Commissioner West.
I think I would defer to staff and legal counsel on what might be reasonable. The language I was looking for a minute ago that someone had suggested from another entity was like, the name of the owners, and if the owner is not a natural person, the applicant shall identify primary parties, officers, and/or director of such entity, including personal contact info. So in that case, it stops at the first disclosure, but I would be curious to see what, what staff could come up with.
We'll, we'll come back with some options.
Okay, others on this, Commissioner Scapdall?
Yeah, I'll go completely the other direction, I think we manage this with the cap and we don't even try to have a per-person limit.
Really?
Just manage it with the cap.
Okay.
For, for me, the five number is kind of, I'm okay with, especially if we're going to possibly look at language that avoids the ability of someone to have more. I think I'd be okay with five. I also understand your reasoning for wanting less than that. I'm like an honest five though, not a dishonest five.
Yes, Commissioner West.
I think I'll just, my, I know, my final thought is I, I do worry that we're not gonna see an honest five, which is why I lean towards a lower number. And I feel strongly about this particular piece because I, I, while I think there is a place for short-term rentals, I feel worried about our housing stock when we don't have any sideboards on people turning housing into a business. And I feel like a per, per person or entity cap helps to, it will not, of course, be a silver, a perfect bullet, but that's not the right metaphor, anyways. But it will, it's at least a step in the direction of helping to limit that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add that if we're worried about the commodification of this, of short-term rentals, this, this provision seems pretty central to what we might attempt to do to stop that, even though it won't be bulletproof and people can find crafty ways around it. Commissioner Mulder.
I look forward to the options, staff's gonna bring us back on the 26th.
Yeah.
And like, I hear everyone, and I don't fully disagree with some of the things and look forward to the options ahead.
Okay. Yeah, especially being that we have 15 minutes, so, yeah.
So, one of the, moving on, I think that was a my Q.
Yes.
So, we put a provision here that for resource, zone, district, short-term rentals in ag-exclusive, ag-general, forest recreation, timberland, may only be permitted as farm stays. And this may seem obscure, but the reason we did this is that it really needs to be in resource production to, to either be in these zones, or perhaps it's in Williamson Act. And so they're getting tax breaks to be in Williamson or to be in TPZ. So, basically, if the short-term rental or the farm stay is being done in such a way that there's tours or education, helping people understand the importance of the, the land and the resource, then that would seem to be an appropriate support for the primary use of the property. That's the rationale behind that. If there's no questions on that, I'm gonna keep moving down to standards for short-term rentals. Health and safety, you've seen the building and fire before, you've seen the solid waste recycling compost before, you've seen the access before, and one of the things here is that has been added in is that the road maintenance association requirement, if a private access road hasn't established a RMA, the permit holder shall be a member in good standing. And that's based upon some concerns that were expressed about increased traffic and, and fairly participating in the maintenance of the road. We've got the same basic provision for maximum overnight occupancy. And then we're moving down to the next section, which talks about neighborhood quality and public nuisance. So these provisions apply to parcels that are within a community plan area, parcels that are 10 acres or fewer, and parcels where the short-term rental is located within 1,000 feet of the nearest neighboring residence. Exceptions to standard C through G may be sought with a special permit. So one of the things we tried to do here is to separate out the truly rural areas from these standards. So these standards would not apply to the really rural areas that don't comply with a community plan area. They're, they're more than 10 acres, they're more than 1,000 feet from their nearest residence. They, that, these standards would not apply. So, there is then the, and, and let me also say that obviously these numbers were things we struggled with. We tried to be intelligent about it, but they're, they're, they're numbers that, that, that aren't sacred. So, they're, they're policy decisions. Providing the Good Neighbor Guide, prior to operation of the short-term rental, the permit holder shall submit to the planning and building department a signed affidavit certifying the delivery of the Good Neighbor Guide. And it talks about dwellings within 300 feet of the short-term rental as the crow flies or the nearest five neighbors up and down the access road. And obviously, we need to correlate that to the discussion we had earlier about, you know, what really does apply, or what should apply on larger parcels. I think we did a little bit better job here and did not fix it above, so I apologize for that. And then we want the neighbors to know who they're, they need to contact if there's something going on that really needs to be addressed and show where the location of the approved parking spaces are and, and then the permit standards, which are basically, for an administrative permit, these ordinance provisions. So what we plan on doing is really having a standard, standard template that people can use for this because all the permit standards are gonna be the same.
Yes, Commissioner West.
I just wanna say I'm excited to hear that you're gonna have a standard template, 'cause that was a public comment that we received quite a bit.
Yep, that was, I thought, a persuasive request we were getting. And so that's, that's very helpful if you can do that. And will you also be willing to provide the information to each applicant as to who does fit within the five nearest neighbors, 300 feet, or whatever the qualification, whatever the requirements applying to them are?
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with people to come in and do that, we can do that on the GIA system pretty easily.
Yeah.
And, so yes.
Okay, I think some people may know and be able to figure that out, but they may not know, or they may have, yeah. Thanks. Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Mulder?
Just briefly, the A and B, the 10% of dwellings on the access road and as a crow flies, if they were existing, came in under existing hypothetically, and they exceeded this already, is there a pathway to getting a permit?
So, you said A and B?
Under IA and B, short-term shall not exceed 10% of dwellings on the access road or as a crow fly, the nearest 10 dwellings shall not be short-term rentals.
So I think that's, we haven't got to that section yet.
Yeah, yeah, you're.
Okay, my bad.
Yeah, we're about to get there.
I thought it was scrolled down there for a minute when I looked up, so.
So, I'm sorry about that. So the, the next section is just lighting, no direct lights shall spill onto adjacent properties or create glare above the property. And then the per parcel limit is one short-term rental permitted per legal parcel. I'd like to discuss that. We, we had a, a lot of comments from people that might have more than one ADU or cabins, and I'm wondering if we would consider amending this to allow more than one short-term rental per legal parcel provided there's an onsite owner or manager for multiple units.
Without a special permit, you mean?
Yes.
I'd be willing to look at options, I, I do remember the testimony of a few different cases where people that would apply, but I would definitely wanna look at the language before I said yes, I'm just good with it.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, you know, granted there's a special permit option, but for certain cases where there are multiple units on a given property, I, I think, you know, I would be open to that as a, as an option to consider. Commissioner West.
I'm hesitant to, to change that limit, I'd be more open to it if it did require a special permit. Um, I'm hesitant to, to change that limit. I'd be more open to it if it did require a special permit. Or when it does.
Commissioner Landry, did you, okay.
I just had a, a question, but it's a little off-topic of what we're currently talking about. Great, okay. Um, to the question about cabins, I, it may be appropriate later, so we can table it if we need to, but uh, one of the larger questions I have coming out of this is that we see folks who are essentially running um, cabins or camping, or it's, it's not just one or two properties, it's more of like a, I don't know what the right planning term is for it. They have yurts, or they have cabins, or A-frames, or whatever it is. Do we have avenues for them to get permitted? Or regulations that define them outside of this current process?
So, A, thank you for the question. B, that's not really the intent of this ordinance. C, yes, we recognize the need to address that separately. Is, was there a consensus on um, options for the parcel limit? I, I know that we're a little bit divided on that.
Again, here, I wasn't speaking to, you know, the yurts or trailers or RV parks or those types of things. I thought we had situations where there are existing homeowners that might have multiple structures on their property, so they're living onsite, they have a, a residence there, and maybe they have one or more ADUs. Certainly, they could apply for a special permit, but it seemed to me like the issue with onsite hosted rentals is a lot different than the unhosted rentals and um, it's almost similar to, you know, uh, shared room in a house. Um, where, in fact, we ha, we had a case here not too long ago where um, the property owner was renting a bedroom and also had an ADU. Was living onsite. Would that require a special permit, or is that just an administrative process? So, I thought we could just um, allow that here. Um, if not, there's still a special permit process, so.
I mean, I think, without taking any more time on it than we have, if you could bring it back to us as an option, we could have a more fulsome discussion or vote later.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we get to neighborhood concentration. Short-term rental may not exceed the following neighborhood concentration limitations, except within the Shelter Cove Community Plan Area where the standard does not apply. And so parcels with a general plan density of one or fewer acres per dwelling unit. Uh, short-term rentals shall not exceed ten percent of the dwellings on the access road. And as the crow flies and there is ten dwellings, shall not be short-term rentals. Parcels with a general plan density of more than one acre per dwelling unit, the short-term rentals shall not exceed twenty percent of the dwellings on the access road. The reason that we tied this to the general plan density was because there's so much variability in parcel sizes out there that it's like, how do you decide, okay, these are five acres, these are one acre, and they're all mixed in amongst each other? So what we started doing is looking at the general plan, and there are discreet boundaries around the density areas so that it'd be easy to look on the GIS, look at the general plan land use map and identify, here's the density for this area, and then tie it directly to that. And then obviously, the, the ten percent is um, is a, a number that was chosen. Um, it's not magical, but it really is intended to try to get to a place where uh, there's less um, short-term rentals than uh, than, than, than not. Basically. The, the, the intensity is a little higher in the, in the areas over an acre. And keep in mind, this only applies to areas where the basic parcel sizes are less than ten acres.
Right. Any parcel that's greater than ten acres is-
If it's outside a community plan area, more than ten acres, and more than a thousand feet from the nearest residence, none of this applies.
None of this applies, right, okay. Got it. So it is, yeah. Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So, I, I guess that's where I was trying to say, for example, for the existing, how would that work if they already exceed these ten percent on the access road and more, more than ten dwellings shall not be, or as a crow flies, what, how would, how would we decide who gets um, a permit?
I, I think what we need to be more clear about is that not only the cap, but the density requirements, subject to the commission's con, you know, concurrence at this point, but it's really the, at least our thinking that for the existing folks, we're gonna bring them in, we're gonna permit them. And then we're gonna let things shake out.
So, just wanna be clear that I heard this correctly, if they're existing and they come in and they meet the other requirements, they will get applied, or they will, will get a permit? And then we're just gonna kinda let it shake it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense. That's the only point at which we will know the neighborhood concentration.
Right.
And then we would be able to manage it going forward, hopefully.
There's just been a few situations that have been brought to my attention, and I'm kinda doing, I haven't sat down in front of a computer and measured, but just mental math and kinda thinking, I'm like, oh, I don't think, I think it already exceeds this.
We're just about out of time. I guess we could give just a couple more minutes to the remaining-
Yes, so it probably would be helpful to talk a little bit about private gatherings and parties. You know, this is something that's typically a prohibition in short-term rental ordinances.
Yeah.
We kind of modified it to say that, you know, if you're gonna rent a home, have it for a short-term rental, and, and you may have a graduation party or something there, that, that you'd need to limit the size. And, and twenty attendees, it's not a huge party, but um, it's a reasonable number. And that number is entirely discretionary.
Commissioner Mulder?
So that number, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I have a little, I understand the theory behind it and thinking of different settings, very urban versus a more rural areas.
Right.
I know if I was renting STR, many of my kids is, I'd be violating this. Holidays, you have to think about holidays, you know, come, experience the North Coast, the Redwoods, and have Thanksgiving, you know, like, we're discouraging that with this language. That's the way I feel, but I also understand that we don't wanna ruin neighborhoods as well. So I'm, it's, it's kind of, I don't know, I'm just trying to express some of my concerns and I, I'm not leaning hard one way or another. I guess what I would say is if, if this passed like this, like it happened, and someone had a nice mellow gathering, and it wasn't obnoxious, the likelihood of getting a, a report to the county would probably be low.
Correct.
I would guess.
Yep. And I do wanna point out that what this does is takes the maximum occupancy of twelve and basically almost doubles it. So this isn't twenty people staying there for, you know, a week. This is a number of people staying there with the ability to have guests come and, and visit and hang out, so. You know, maybe if it's a Thanksgiving, there's people staying in other STRs or in hotels in the area, or whatever it is, and then they're concentrating at a particular location.
I, I have no idea how to resolve it, but I do think that it's one of those things where in, as Thomas said, in many many situations, this would be no problem at all, unlikely to generate any concerns. In others, a few of whom have written letters about, you know, this happens repeatedly in a dense neighborhood, and it's a major disruption.
Right, but keep in mind, we're already controlling noise and parking. So, to me, this is, I guess I'm trying to keep this ordinance as consolidated as I-
Sure.
As I can, and these are just things that are vague, difficult to manage, arbitrary, um, and quite frankly, are gonna, are gonna be hard to enforce.
Hard to enforce, yeah.
Right, so you're making a statement um, that is gonna be complaint-based. So, unfortunately, it's only managed by, it's, it's complaint-based, and the complaints are gonna be about parking and noise, not how many people were there.
Yeah.
So.
Fair point. Commissioner West?
Um, I know we're trying to get through this, so I think it's just a point of clarification to bring up next time. That, like, while we do have parking um, standards, they don't necessarily really address gatherings. I think that was my initial concern when we were talking about it. In shared home rentals, is that at, at the moment, we talk about for overnight guests, but we don't really talk about parking for parties. And it, and I'm struggling with the same issue everybody else is, is how do you, how do you find the balance, but that is something I'm considering for this piece.
I think this is where I should say to Director Ford, in, in closing, I mean, we've essentially gotten through, you know, the six pages, and great.
I, I, I think we've done very well.
I, I think we have too. Um, in closing, I'd, I'd like to give you the opportunity to, to tell us anything that you think is in play here that we should really focus on as we, as we head into a, a, a public hearing about this, and maybe if any commissioners wanna make a last comment about something that maybe we didn't get to address, or, or you have a thought about real quick, so we can close this out and move on. But Director Ford, did you, did you have any?
I don't have anything else. I, I have a, a, a lot of feedback to, to take and work on, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'll just make a comment. I think uh, staff has done a great job on bringing this to us, and uh, the process of the public comment, the workshops, this workshop, and final hearing's been outstanding. I do wish we would spend as much time working on the other side of the equation, which is how to streamline the building permit process and why we aren't getting more housing developed in Humble County, which is the real issue here, and instead of um, trying to manage what we do with the limited housing we have, um, try to figure out how to actually solve that problem and help create and develop more housing.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, everything I've heard from either side of this issue is there's a lot of heart and passion behind everyone that I've heard speak. And it's, I think so far, the staff and the commission is doing a good job trying to steer the ship in a agreeable, not every, not everyone's gonna be happy with it, wherever we end up, but I look forward to continuing a respectful dialogue amongst us, trying to get to some sort of common ground, and I guarantee I'll probably not like a few things in it, and I'm okay with that.
Um, I wanna echo what Commissioner Mulder and Commissioner Scavdell said in um, commanding staff. I think that the draft we have in front of us has um, is, does a great job balancing a lot of different needs, and I am thrilled with where we have gotten, and I look forward to talking about the pieces a little bit more. Um, one thing that we did, haven't talked about that's on my brain that I will probably be bringing up next time, so just as a forewarning to staff, I guess. I have some questions about taxes and business licenses, kind of as we start at the meeting. I'm curious how those play into um, the permit. I personally would like to see folks who are doing their due diligence, um, be rewarded for that and um, make that clear in our ordinance.
Great job. Staff and good discussion. I certainly learned a lot and considered a lot of things in this discussion. And I appreciate the, the notes that have been taken and look forward to seeing those revisions and options and things. And I yield the floor.
Thanks. Very briefly, I think you guys have done an excellent job on this, on the feedback that's, that's led to various revisions that have made it uh, much stronger. I think we're getting close to an ordinance that can balance things as well as we can. Just real quickly to throw out for future discussions, um, I would still like to look at a couple places where I think some of the provisions that apply broadly maybe shouldn't apply, or shouldn't apply in the same way in more rural, spread-out areas. There's some of that distinction here. I think there could be more. I still would like to kick the tires of the AOB and uh, ADU questions a little more, and at least discuss what it might look like if we were to open up the ADU to some limited, say, sixty-day-a-year rentals of ADUs or things like that. Just, just to have that discussion of what that might look like, what, if, what, what could be possible, what's done elsewhere. And finally, something I heard from so many comments uh, in various ways is that to, to Commissioner Scavdell's point, if there was some way to actually direct some of the revenue that is raised through this industry and uh, through, you know, it's, it's increasingly lucrative uh, economic part of our community, to take some of the revenue that comes from SCRs to the county and direct them into some sort of a housing trust that could in fact make a meaningful difference in some of the underserved housing needs and low-income housing and things like that. There's a, some ideas floating around in these comments that, that I thought were pretty creative.
I think the board's actually already done that.
We have done that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe we can hear more about that later.
Yeah.
Thank you, John, for walking us through this really, really well.
Yeah, could I just add one thing?
Yes.
Um, one of the things that got us here are a lot of the people who are in the audience and online.
Yeah.
That have really come to every single meeting and really participated. And I just wanna express my appreciation to the way that you've all participated in this and helped make us better. So, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. The, the community input has been amazing and very educational. Thank you all. Well, with that, we have uh, two more things to get through, and I hope we can do so in fifty minutes. The first being the public hearing on the uh, patient-to-patience, Patient-to-Patient Incorporated uh, conditional use permit and special permit in the Wood Ranch area of Redway. And I would invite Mr. Lazar to give us a staff report as soon as he's ready.
Thank you, Chair, Commission. Steve Lazar, I'm the project assigned planner for this item. And I think we have a slideshow we should be able to start seeing soon. Okay. Uh, yes, so this is a, a conditional use permit and special permit for cannabis cultivation, a mixture of both existing and new and expansion. The applicant is patient-to-patient. You can see in this slide, uh, there's two different permits at play. The use permit is for the relocation permitting of about approximately thirty-nine thousand square feet in addition to expansion of that thirty-nine thousand up to eighty-six thousand square feet in total, or roughly two acres of cultivation. In addition, a special permit's being sought in order to allow for remediation and restoration work within the streamside management area associated with several onsite wetlands and watercourses. This is, the next slide is showing kind of the location of where the project is. Uh, in the lower left-hand side of the slide, you can see Redway. Uh, this is in the Wood Ranch area. Uh, it's composed of a number of larger parcels uh, that pack up to the Bear Buttes on the, on the north side of it, and is bounded by the South Fork of the Eel River on the east side. Looking a little closer, uh, you can see the project's location is, is near the east side of those holdings, and it, the parcel is a roughly three hundred sixty acres, three hundred eighty acres, somewhere about that, and it, and it goes all the way to the South Fork. This is a slide showing uh, permits. Take a second here to kind of walk through it here. The, the green parcels are parcels that are in the process, the one on the far right, we were just looking at a moment ago, that's the patient-to-patient property. Ones that are in orange are withdrawn or denied or closed, but there were applications we received. Ones with the striping um, are ones that have been approved. So you can see at this time, we have uh, two interim permits associated with existing applications that are seeking uh, permits. And we have two approved projects. The approved projects uh, total roughly twenty-two thousand square feet, and the interim permits associated with the existing sites that are yet to be permitted are upwards of three acres in total. Now, the application tonight, uh, the project you see down here, this interim permit that's for roughly an acre- you see down here, this interim permit that's for roughly an acre, that's the one that's seeking to go up to two acres. So, all told, you can kind of get a feel for what would be the total amount of cultivation within the Wood Ranch road system. That's what the white line is based on, the roads that serve this area. Even though those green parcels you see on the north side of that line are very close, they are not accessible via the road system, and that's why we kind of defined it the way we did, based on some of the concerns we've heard, which we'll get into in a moment. This is showing the zoning and land use. It's a mixture of AE and TPZ, essentially the areas that are open, grassland or AE, the areas that are forested are TPZ, and the land use designation for the property is timberland. On this slide, we're trying to show kind of the breakout. We've divided the project description, you may have noticed, into two parts. Part one being the remediation and restoration of all of the existing cultivation sites. Those sites were, in some cases, established prior to 2016 and were legitimate pre-existing sites. It's hard to see on this slide, but the areas that are in red, sort of on the lower part of the screen, were areas where there was expansion after 2016 or brand-new sites established. And as a consequence of that, the applicant was subject to enforcement and violations associated with our department, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Department of Efficient Wildlife, and there were penalties assessed. The sites had to be mothballed, and there was an interest in seeing them permitted initially because the site was eligible for a larger amount of cultivation, but through engagement with the regional board, little by little, each of the sites were determined to be unpermissible under the water board's order. And that's why we have kind of a two-part application where all those sites will go away and be remediated, and they'll be relocated into the upper part of the property, which we'll see in another slide, but you can see it on this one as well. And that's what I'm showing here. We zoom in, I think. You can kind of see on the ground where that would be located. To the right and below, you see some of those pre-existing sites that are going away. That's the area that in total would be roughly 86,000 square feet. The bottom three greenhouses would be dedicated for propagation or nursery facilities. And that's just a close-up. This is subject to change as far as the sizes of the greenhouse, but I want to give you an idea of the general area where they'd be located and the total amount of cultivation. So there's flexibility within that area to change the length and width, but for the most part, that's the configuration currently presented. This is showing the water sources. There's two ponds that are located on the property. Both of them are near the tops of, you know, from a landscape position, they're near the top of ridge lines, so they're not receiving water from above. They're at the top of the watershed. They, in total, would contain over 2 million gallons of storage, and the applicant estimates roughly 900,000 or 866,000 gallons of storage under the proposal before you tonight. They have water data. They've been in operation at this site, but the proposal before you tonight is a much more modest amount of cultivation. It's a pure outdoor situation with deprivation, light depth, but not mixed light in the sense of having light in the flowering areas. So there's less cultivation cycles and less water used consequently. This is showing kind of the baseline or what's historically occurred. You can see there's illumination, lights hung from the greenhouses, one of the existing greenhouses. There were generators, extensive use of generators to supply power because there is no power to this property. That will all go away if the project were to be approved tonight because that is not the proposal, is a purely outdoor proposal. However, I want to point out that in the conditions and the language of the permit, we are recommending that they be allowed to use generators just to supply power to the propagation, the onsite nursery facilities that require, you know, at least 18 hours of light to keep plants in a vegetative state. That would be harder to do without generator use at this time. But that is a policy question. You know, the commission has the right to go in a different direction, but that's consistent with past practice, I understand. This is just showing the road system, and I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about that because we have heard from the neighborhood concerns about road impacts. You can see that the yellow kind of shows the lengths of road and where that goes out to, different areas, but in total, it's roughly 13 miles of road. Looking a little closer here, you can see there's almost 26 different parcels that are served by that road. This is a site that's been in operation since roughly 20, well, I think the applicant can clarify, but certainly for over 10 years. And as a consequence, it's not the only site in the area, as you saw in those permit application map, but there has been a lot of traffic in this road system, and I think the neighborhood recognizes there's some lingering frustration about that traffic and where to assess the blame for it. Looking again here, you can see the parcel's location is roughly two and a half miles down this road. This is a Den N Road. There's no other secondary access point that is available. I did drive the road on a site visit about five, six weeks ago. I would say that it meets the category four standard in the sense of the same practical effect, but does not represent an 18 to 20-foot-wide road for its entire length. There are pinch points, you can see in this slide here, where there's a bridge crossing one of the tributaries of the South Fork, it necks down, but you have good visibility on either side and staging areas, so that's where that practical effect concept comes in. Just a couple slides showing kind of road conditions. You can see here, not 18 to 20, but in some cases, it gets up there. And this is going up the hill from the bottom of the road, and this is near the junction. So, you know, the things that we worked with, we had a neighborhood meeting ahead of the planning commission to try to suss out some of this, and some of the ideas that we brainstormed during that meeting to try to deal with both trips on the road and driving behavior on the road, which is a little harder. And so, the conditions reflect some somewhat idiosyncratic requirements in that the applicants agreed to commit to installing speed limit signage that doesn't exist, to help, you know, put a dent in that behavior. There was a neighboring property owner who was at the meeting who had a parcel that was in a good spot. This is a private road, so it doesn't need an encroachment permit or anything like that, and that property owner said they were agreeable to having the signage installed on their road frontage. The applicant has historically paid a larger percentage of the road dues. There's no road maintenance association, and the folks at the neighborhood meeting were very clear, they didn't really want to form one, and they felt that was more of a burden than an asset. Nevertheless, the applicant, we have the condition requiring that they pay at least double the dues that are established by the road group, that's the way we refer to it, or an amount to be determined by the group, so it could be larger. In terms of measures to commit to reduce the vehicle trips, there are some ways to do that. Shuttleling of employees, having employees stay on the site overnight and not make commutes to and from their normal residences, also having, possible like, oh, preventing lunchtime traffic. You can imagine that to date, there's been no oversight of operations on this farm or many others, and so it's been whatever they felt was okay. Going through the process and agreeing to commit to keeping trips down and agreeing to control the vehicle trips amongst your employees, that's essentially the, we're at that point right now. And the applicant feels like they can commit to certain vehicle trip limits, which I believe we've set at, we have a limit for ordinary operation and then harvest time, and it goes, I think, from 12 to 20 trips a day. So that's what they're agreeing to and pledging to keep to as part of the permit. So I'm going to walk through a couple site photos just to kind of show what the situation on the ground looks like. So first, I'll show you the first cultivation area. We saw that earlier. This is one of the sites that's going to have to be remediated. The portion of the site you see right here was actually lawfully pre-existing, but in the distance, as we looked inside, it was extended a great deal, and that was an unauthorized expansion. So this will be remediated. The next site you can see are down here. They got into some wetlands and watercourses that resulted in these sites being determined to be unpermissible under the water board's order. Looking in the distance, this greenhouse is one that still remains. They have removed a number of greenhouses in this area that you no longer see. And then this is just a close-up. You can see that they're not in operation. The interim permit was revoked by our department, and it was, in July was the deadline to remove all the plants, and that has been done. I can say that they complied with that. This is one of the ponds, just to see sort of what these look like. This is the smaller of the two, 800,000 gallons. This is the larger pond, a little bit further north. This is the area that is targeted for new cultivation, just to kind of, you can see the drainage of the South Fork in the distance, and you can see the field is where this is taking the pin, you can kind of see in the top-left corner. That's where I was photographing from, so you're looking across the field towards the area where greenhouses are targeted. So, one of the central things that I think you're going to hear from the applicant about tonight is with regard to a condition we applied, that we're recommending a certain timing to the development. As I mentioned earlier, there are two parts essentially to this project. There's the part that involves remediation and restoration of the pre-existing sites and the illegally expansion sites, and there's a part that involves relocation to a new site, meaning the criteria of the ordinance. The condition, I won't read it off to you, but it essentially says you won't be able to, going back to the slide, operate your part two, the new site, until you've completed the remediation and restoration of part one, which is the pre-existing sites and expansion sites. There's a number of choices that, you know, the commission might want to think about as far as where is the line for what constitutes an appropriate time to pivot into the second part of the project? And, you know, it's, given the egregiousness of the violations, expansion, the issues that have kind of come with the project description being somewhat unstable until very recently where we've kind of landed on this relocation concept, we're several years down the road without kind of remedy of these violations, and I think that's partly motivating it, and I think it's consistent with past practice where we have violations of sort to require the cleanup ahead of it. But this is of a scale and a sort that I think you're going to hear from the applicant and their agents that that might be very difficult to do and might be economically challenging as well. So, that's the language in the condition, but, you know, without reading it, essentially says part one has to be completed before part two, and part two is the new cultivation area. It can be online. We have prepared an initial study for the project. There's 18 different mitigation measures. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through each of them, but I'm happy to answer questions about them if should you. I want to point out that we do have a tweak to one of the mitigation measures as a result of comments we received from the Department of Efficient Wildlife. That tweak I have on the screen here, it's a fairly minor change. It's essentially to do with pre-construction surveys for nesting birds, adjusting buffer widths, adjusting the timeframe, shortening it basically before resurveys needed, and having a trigger that if there's a lapse in project activities of seven days or more, making it clear that there needs to be resurvey. So the idea is you do the pre-construction survey, and then within seven days, you initiate your work because you've cleared it for there's no critters in the vicinity. So, it's just tightening a few things up. It's a fairly minor change, but you do, should you approve the project tonight, you need to make sure to include in your motion to adopt the substitute mitigation measure. So, we're recommending approval. The initial studies evaluated the potential impacts. Mitigation measures have been included that address common environmental concerns. The project conditions address some of the more unique concerns to the neighborhood, and the remediation and relocation of these sites will ultimately result in a net benefit to the environment by putting cultivation in more optimal locations. It meets the requirements for expansion. It's a 320-plus-acre parcel, which allows for one acre per 100 acres. They're actually seeking a cultivation amount less than what they're entitled to under the ordinance. And the special permit that is included with this is necessary to allow the restoration or mediation work to occur. And they have, there is a little bit of refinement that will likely continue to occur. They're working with the water board on finalizing the cleanup restoration monitoring program, which is a document that will guide a lot of the restoration activities, but we feel like it's close enough that, you know, it won't deviate significantly in form or function from what is in our MND and what is in the materials you receive tonight. So, with that said, I think I've reached the end. You always have the right to add, delete, amend permit conditions. You can require a further environmental review should you see that fit to do that, and you can always deny the request for the permit. And this is a suggested motion, and with that, I'm going to end my presentation for now, and I'll be open to answering any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar. That was excellent, very clear. Any quick questions for Mr. Lazar before we have public comment and hear from the applicant?
Could you revisit and help me better understand? You had said that they've transitioned from generator light grow to a light deprivation, but there was still some need for some generator use. Would you?
Thank you. Through the chair, the need for the generator use will be mostly in relation to having an onsite nursery. So if you're going to produce your own starts, that means that you have to be able to keep plants with a certain amount of light, more than Mother Nature can provide during certain times of the year. So to do that, you got to be using some kind of light source. I think the applicant can speak to, there are some ways to do it with solar, kind of self-contained units that will, it doesn't need a lot of light. You just need to have enough to keep the plants from deciding that it's time to go to flower. So, there may be some room to potentially pull back from that, but the idea was to have a proper nursery with sufficient amount of light to keep the plants in a good situation, you're going to have to have a generator.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions at this time for staff? Commissioner Mulder?
Just quick expertise. I've spoke to a few concerned people about this project, so I didn't get a chance to say that before the staff report, so I wanted to say that now.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, then I do want to open up public comment, but I want to begin with the applicant and their agent. Are there two people who want to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
He's on Zoom, and I just saw him raise his hand. So, we always offer the applicant more time, you know, usually up to 10 minutes. You know, you don't have to take all that time, but I do want you to have the opportunity to make your case, and you can come back up at the end after you hear from any other public commenters, either to respond to that or to answer other questions. Are you the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Okay, so come on up. Or Jeff can go first, as you prefer. He is here on Zoom, had his hand raised, so. Got it. Okay, sure, we can go to Jeff first, if we could. Jeff, you are unmuted, I believe.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Great.
I would, of course, be there in person, but I am terribly ill this evening, so please forgive me, and, you know, I think I would much prefer to be doing this in person. What I'd like to say is that I've been on this project since the very beginning, and I can tell you that the applicant is committed to seeing this project through. I thought Mr. Lazar did a fantastic job on the staff report. As Mr. Lazar alluded to, the only issue that we do have is with the timing of the development. The issue is that it becomes economically infeasible to conduct the remediation while not being allowed to cultivate. Mr. Kurtley from Omsburg and Preston is going to be presenting to you tonight, and he has some figures to present that will explain this better, but essentially, if the project goes through as proposed, the applicant believes it is infeasible to engage in all of the remediation that's called in the timeframe before being able to cultivate. And so, a couple of outcomes could come from that, mainly being, he may lose the property, the property may be sold, and that would lead to uncertainty. I would argue that the applicant before you today is certain in that he is going to stay the course, but he has to be allowed to cultivate in the meantime to do that. And I'll turn my time over to Mr. Kurtley.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't have the button pressed. Now I think we can hear you.
Apologies. I'm Dylan Kirkley with Omsburg and Preston, and Steve is pulling up a PowerPoint for me right now. Yes, this is slide two. And so, this is an overview of our projects and timeline for the violations and the remediation work associated with associated with cultivation impacts. So based upon the project timeline of about sixteen to twenty weeks to complete the implementation, that will take up the entirety of next year's operating timeline. For most of this work will have to occur during, during dry season work, which is June fifteenth to October fifteenth. So that's roughly sixteen weeks. And this is a best case outcome for this work to be completed. You know, it doesn't factor in the equipment, you know, breakdown and, you know, it's about a million things that could go wrong. So with the phased development outlined in the staff's report, this project could potentially be offline for two years. And slide three, please, Steve. Thank you. And so here's the total project cost, projected costs for the remediation restoration. The cost moving forward at this time would be, would require the applicant to expend three hundred and twenty-five thousand to four hundred thousand dollars to complete the work. And the projected net income of his cultivation with the expansion in twenty twenty-four, if he's allowed to cultivate, would be four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. So this would be a net loss of that amount, given market fluctuations over the course of two years. This would be, you know, a huge loss for him. And also you'd be required to pay for the entire project out of pocket. This does not include legacy issues that will, are addressed in the CRMP as recommended by CDFW and State Water Board. And, you know, I would, in my opinion, it would simply infeasible to, for the applicant to absorb these costs without the income to pay for the restoration. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. My name is Young Jacobson. I'm the property owner on this site. I've lived in Humboldt County for forty-seven years. I've owned this property for more than twenty. I'm here because mistakes were made when this cultivation development took place. It's been a long road to try and take the responsibility and fix it. It's a little tougher than just fixing it. It's, it's a long process. So for the most part, I want to make sure I'm here and it's expressed that I'm here to take responsibility. And kind of adding to what everybody's saying here tonight, I, it's going to be tough to take that responsibility without some assistance from, from you all. Like if this goes through, like Jeff spoke of, it's going to be incredibly hard to do this amount of work without being in business. It's been out of business this season. I, I'm regardless committed to do everything I can. It's just going to be, it's going to be a tough road. So, and Jeff spoke to the possibilities of selling or having the wrong person, you know, a different person that's not as familiar with this. I mean, there was a time I brought an attorney in to analyze this and I got a nineteen thousand dollar bill for him to analyze it. Like it took him that long to read and even get on a phone. So it's a complicated process and project. So I would just argue that if this project were to be able to be in business, it would get cleaned up. I know that's the spirit intent of some of this ordinance is to take these legacy projects and, you know, bring them to a better place and get them in compliance. So that is what I'm here to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we will have the opportunity to call you back up for, either to respond to other comments or to answer questions. So, but thank you so much for keeping your initial presentation as short as you guys did, just given the time here. At this point, I do now want to open it up to other public comments, either from anyone who's here in the room or on Zoom or phone. Is anyone here in the room wishing to comment on this? Please, sir, come on, come on up. And you have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I own property with Young, adjoining Young, like a quarter mile. I've owned property on the Wood Ranch since eighty-six, so it's thirty-seven years. So he, when he was, when he first bought up there, he immediately started overburdening the road. He had, he had a motorcycle racetrack up there and made noises for everybody. It was two-stroke motorcycles. So as for a neighbor, he hasn't been the best neighbor. And I, I saw on this STR thing you guys had here, good neighbor guy, he needs to get some. But the, the road is basically two miles, two and a half miles where it goes in. And that's the part that's been a problem ever since he's been up there with his farms. And, um, but anyways, I'm, I've kind of changed my mind about part one of this and part two. I think he should be actually able to be a guy who could continue to start up his farm like they want. And, but not eighty thousand acre, or eighty thousand square feet. Or, or I think more like twenty thousand square feet. And then he should have a process where we can, after about a year, we can come, come back and complain or, or say, hey, we don't even know he's there anymore. And, and then that would be good. So if he was able to work with what he wants, where he does part one, at the same time he's building his new, his new scene there, then he could make it work. Because I don't know of anybody that doesn't want him to make it work. We just don't want the noise and bad people going fast up and down our road. So that's the only reason I'm here and waited three hours to speak is because of the road use. That's it. No other real reason. So that's it. And so those reasons, one and two at the same time, and I think I speak for most of all the people on the Wood Ranch, or a lot of them, that's for sure, is it's just about the road use. And if he was able to do that and, and then prove himself with just twenty thousand square feet or in that neighborhood, then come back and he gets, then he can get his other eighty or sixty thousand square feet or whatever. But nobody really wants him to not be there. We just want him to respect the road, respect the rights of the other people that are on the ranch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room wishing to comment? Okay, don't see any other hands. Is there anyone else on Zoom or phone wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no further hands here or virtually, I will close public comment. Did you want to take a quick moment, sir, to respond just to what was said there by that comment? That's, we offered that to the applicant.
I would, thank you very much. So this project, around twenty eighteen, to, to actually participate in the three hundred and twenty acre part of the ordinance, it actually merged three parcel numbers. It was to, to, to get to that acreage. So the idea of merging all the parcels to kind of facilitate the ordinance, it does seem like a, a tough road to go down to like take a bunch of parcels that had a certain value, merge them into one to get over an acre and then suggest to go down under an acre. And, and I would speak to the neighbors around me as far as motorcycles there. You'll notice any kid, any neighbors that actually border me on a property line are not here saying something was loud or noisy. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, we'll close public comment, reserving the right to call up the applicant or his agents for, for their questions if needed. But I'll now bring it back to the commission. Thoughts on this? Questions?
Yeah, I'll start. So things were done outside of what was permissible. And the remediation of that as a step to come into compliance and be able to do what you want to do next. I kind of like that suggestion. But then there's challenges in being able to find that affordable. I'm a little curious, if we were to deviate from that desire or that want for the remediation to happen before the continued growth, are there some proposals that they may have in order to show us, here's how this would work? And what I'm hearing as part of the testimony is the only way that remediation could work is to be able to have this growth happening at the same time, to have a grow happening at the same time. I'm curious to kind of how that pencils out. Are there some options to maybe be considered to deviate from the steps that have been suggested to us? I guess that's where, where my thought process is at the moment.
Commissioner Scabdo?
I have a thought on that. And this is the same catch-22 we find ourselves in every, every time with one of these things. You know, we, we want to get the site cleaned up. It's not likely to be cleaned up if the owner can't continue to, to, you know, have a commercial business there. So, but I'm wondering if the county's ever considered accepting a performance bond of some sort to ensure that we're actually going to get the cleanup. So, you know, we have a, basically a four hundred thousand dollar cleanup cost. Could the applicant possibly propose a bond that, to the county, that in the event that it didn't get cleaned up, we could exercise a bond and hire somebody to clean up the site?
That, that is an option. Sometimes performance bonds, in all honesty, are hard to get for cannabis cultivators. But it has been done and perhaps it's even getting easier. I, I can't for sure testify to that.
It is, you know, one idea I had in response to your comment on X.
Mr. West? Oh, did, did you have your? Were you indicating Thomas or?
Oh, no, I, I had a question, but I also thought maybe Commissioner Scabdo had a follow-up to what he was.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
I was just going to say, I struggle to approve a site that needs significant remediation that was operating, you know, out of compliance and, and, and now needs to be, you know, operating again in order to do the cleanup. That's just a hard one for me to, to, to get through. I would definitely prefer that, that the project go forward as the county proposed, where we complete phase one before we start phase two. But I understand that could mean the project doesn't get, doesn't get completed and we're stuck with unremediated site.
Right. Hand up. Commissioner Mulder?
So that triggers a couple of questions. This, I'm just going to throw out a hypothetical and this is through the chair to staff. Say there is a, some sort of permit granted for a small cultivation area. And they walk away or whatever, it doesn't work out. What happens to the site? What would hap, like what would happen to the site? Would it be something through code violation or?
Yes, fundamentally, if, if they walked away from the site without doing the remediation, that would become a code enforcement action for the illegal activity which has occurred on the site. And if the property owner has completely walked away, obviously there's no property owner to remediate that, to take care of that, then it would be a, really a decision on whether or not violations and corrections that are needed are significant enough to, to, for the county to abate it. And if the county were to abate it, then the property would, would be leaned. A four hundred thousand dollar cost of doing that would be a huge abatement.
I'm aware. So I guess then a piggyback or a follow-up question on that. The site in its current state, let's just say, nothing went through tonight and it's left there with all this cleanup. The same process would potentially happen, correct? Or because the, the way I read it, there's an open code violation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, even though we've closed public comment, the applicant's agent, Jeff Stark, has his hand up and I'm going to allow him to speak since I think he is probably wanting to offer something that's germane to this discussion. Mr. Slack, go ahead. Can you unmute? You appear to be unmuted.
So to go to these points, the, the remediation, so the, and I'll let Mr. Kurtley explain, but we've already entered into a, a number of agreements with the water board, me, this CDFW, these are all in process. And to go to Commissioner Landry's point, I, I think there are some options here. One option is to maybe permit the pre-existing, as was shown in the staff report. We did not want to propose that in split hairs. We obviously would like to see the project go forward as proposed, but without this, this condition. So I'll leave that to, to Mr. Kurtley to explain that further. But that, that's, that's what I wanted to get across.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kurtley, did you want to explain that? Because I do have questions about the logistics of whether all mitigation can even occur or, or whether cultivation can occur prior to, to the remediation in terms of, are there different areas or the same areas involved?
Yes, so I do have in my slides just a outline of the violation sites and versus, and the, the cultivation-related impact sites, which are all part of the cleanup, which we've, uh, we are, we are just about to receive 401, 404 and sixteen hundred permits. They're pretty much all in line. It's more based upon, you know, Humboldt County approval and fluctuations that those projects or that those permits will have based upon, you know, what is approved. And so we have six sites that are in remediation, three are violation sites and three are project impacts. And those are basically ready to go. I have a, a meeting actually tomorrow with Army Corps of Engineers and water board representatives. And that will hopefully be the, the last meeting that we have, that we get everything streamlined. But they've already, the water board has recommended approval for the permit for all of these sites.
For those sites, that essentially that remediation is complete?
Yes, yeah, the remediation site. So if we, the last step really for that is the Humboldt County grading permit, which we've submitted as well. And that will kind of be the last puzzle piece. And we'll have the 401, 404 and sixteen hundred permits issued shortly. And although work likely won't be able to occur at, at all this year because October fifteenth is the, the dry, the dry season cutoff. And I don't believe that the Humboldt, that Humboldt County could issue a grading permit in that time. I'm not sure. But, and then for work to commence, only have to stop with the first rain. And there's a whole lot of moving pieces with this project. But we are very close to a, a full approval from all the agencies after, I believe, six years this has been going on.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I want to try to keep this moving because we are unfortunately running out of time.
So, Chair?
Yes.
Did I just hear that it is this close to being completed, all the remediation components? Is that what I heard?
It's a portion of what has to be remediated.
I see.
Mr. Lazar?
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to just clarify one thing. So what I think you can see, Mr. Kirkley illustrating is regardless of what you do tonight, they're trying to fix the issues with the water board and the number of violations that they have to deal with, independent of being able to cultivate. And so one thing I want to remind the commission is we want to approve a special permit tonight if possible because some of the remediation work will require work within streamside management areas. So to that end, they're poising themselves to be able to begin that once the dry weather season is upon them and the grading permits are in fact in our office waiting approval. So they're ready to begin the work of remediating, but they are not at all complete or even one percent. 1% complete in doing the work.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
So, our staff is suggesting that we do the remediation and then we get to the new development. And we are still holding on that, staff? Is that my understanding?
That's our common recommendation in situations like this. So, that remains our recommendation.
I mean, I'll just throw out there, I thought the suggestion from the neighbor was not unreasonable, that conceivably, we could approve a portion of the total requested cultivation area to go forward at this time, and the remainder, and I don't know if 20,000 or one acre, which would be 50% basically, would be appropriate. But, you know, some portion of it could be approved to go forward essentially next year as the remediation is underway, with the remainder being held out until such time as the remediation's complete and signed off on. And is it really quick? And I mean, I don't...
Yes, I was just...
Yeah.
Sorry. Since this got brought up, CDFW did recommend that the remediation work be completed before the expansion is allowed. So, if the board is looking, or sorry, the commission is looking to do a partial approval, maybe it could be the previous legal operated size, which I believe Steve has at, I'm not sure, 39,000 square feet. But that was CDFW's recommendation, was to have the remediation done before the expansion is allowed. That was all.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't want to split hairs. That's not the way I read that comment. So, I don't know if we want to take a break to reread that. The way that I see this project being proposed is this is all new cultivation. The remediation's happening, and then everything, the other cultivation sites. So, if we're going to use that language, I either need to take a minute and reread that because that's not my interpretation of what I... Or kind of go down the road that we're talking.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at what I think is the relevant language here at the end of the letter from Tina Bartlett, Attachment 5B, summary recommendations. "To ensure sufficient timely restoration of impacted wetlands and streams, the lead agency should condition the project to require the completion of remediation and restoration activities prior to the expansion of cannabis cultivation at the new site." But there may be other language in there that is saying before any cultivation or that any cultivation would be considered expansion.
The way I read it, that new site was expanded. But I'm not trying to split hairs. I'm just saying, like, before we go on that, I think we should really reread stuff.
Well, you raise a really good point, which I wanted to put to Mr. Lazar, which is, apart from your recommendation that we do Step One and Step Two, are there... Would approval of this, of a request that the applicant's making to do, let's just say, some part, whatever, of the cultivation to allow that to go forward while remediation's not yet complete? Would that, as you see it, run afoul of any firm recommendations or requests of the agency, CDFW or the Water Board?
I don't believe so. No, the Water Board actually really is focused exclusively on remediation. They will have a bite at the apple when enrollment occurs for the new site, and they'll regulate it at that time. CDFW, those comments were fairly late last week we received them, but I think they speak... They basically reinforce our position, but maybe, I agree with Commissioner Mulder, you could read it a number of different ways. Expansion could be just any new expansion of anything anywhere, or it could be, you know, above the baseline amount.
Right.
But certainly, the concept of relocating and allowing that to occur under the principles of an existing site has been well-worn at this point under the original ordinance, and this falls within that. So, it shouldn't really be viewed as new in that regard, but it is a new location, so we don't want to lose sight of that.
I see Director Ford has his hand up.
Steve, for the commission's benefit, what was the cav number?
39,000 square feet.
It was 39,000 square feet.
I should say it was a larger amount, but it was reduced after further scrutiny.
Okay. So, you know, if it's the commission's interpretation of this and you're inclined to kind of split the recommendation, you could understand that to be, to allow them to move ahead with 39,000, even if it is at the new location. And then, I think, and to get the restoration, have the restoration completed before the remainder is allowed to proceed. I think one of the questions that you would want to be very clear about is what is the threshold for the remediation, at which point, and who approves that second phase then?
I'm prepared to support the project as the staff proposed in two phases, with the condition that we would allow them to start Phase Two if they could provide a performance bond for the remediation.
I'm curious to what was the intention of the language that we are finding a bit ambiguous? And I'm wondering if it is out of order to get that clarification to move forward with how we go.
Yeah, I don't think we know what the intent of that language was. I think as Mr. Lazar, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think we interpreted as that new area is all new. And so, that's the reason the condition is written the way it is.
Commissioner Mulder.
So, going, I'm going to go back to where I started off my first questions. I asked staff if nothing, like, we approve it as is and they aren't able to remediate it, we could get into a site where the county ends up with a $400,000 cleanup bill. If we allowed them to do a small cultivation and, for whatever reason, it doesn't work out, the county could also end up with a $400,000 cleanup bill. So, I mean, I heard from the neighbor, 20,000 square feet, just that's 25% of the proposed project, maybe a little bit less. Maybe that's something we could try to possibly do and do a phased-in approach, whereas if they do all the remediation work, then, you know, maybe they have a really good first round, and they're able to get through their construction, get all the remediation work, and possibly apply for a license and get that through and enable the plant in August. I mean, this hypothetical best-case scenario. That could give a potential for someone to clean up a site, clean up the environment, and the county not stuck with the $400,000 bill. If we went down that road, a lot of the complaints that I read was about driving and stuff like that. So, I just wanted to highlight that the applicant's aware of conditions of approval, two through five, I think it is, where basically, the way I read it, the end of five, "Ongoing and regular instances of complaints concerning excessive speeds or dangerous driving shall be grounds for a permit revocation." So, I just, I want to make sure that even though these are conditions of approval and, you know, it's part of the project, that it's, I've read that into the record. I'd like to hear what some of my other fellow commissioners would think about, you know, I'm not stuck to a number. Just trying to think of a way to possibly get to the end result of not over-impacting the neighborhood. If, you know, the concerns that were read, they're like, hey, we want the environment cleaned up beforehand, but we did hear one concerned neighbor throw out an idea, so...
And I'm concerned that if we only, if the applicant starts with only a limited-size farm, we're going to end up still with a $400,000 bill and an abandoned farm. So, that's why I support either going exactly as the staff has recommended, so we get the remediation done first, or somewhat of a guarantee that we'll get the remediation done if he provides a bond before he starts on his expansion plan. And I don't know if you can get a bond or not, but I suspect that if you have all your permits in hand and you have a county permit that's contingent on the bond, you have a better chance of getting a bond than just no permits and trying to get a bond for the cleanup.
Right. Director Ford.
Yeah, so, just playing on that, was wondering if rather than being specific to a bond, it would be an acceptable form of surety?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Because that could be a number of things.
Yeah.
Yep.
Fine with me. Okay. Okay.
I like Commissioner Scavdell's concept in moving forward on that. That's something that I would support. And I also just want to say, I don't understand why we couldn't get clarity on the verbiage that was used coming from the agency it was coming from.
I mean, right now? I mean, we would have to continue this, you're saying, to another date to do that.
But I like that, too.
Yes, Steve.
So, it was late received. I did have a conversation with CDFW ahead of that letter, and I can only tell you that my expectation is that it was essentially advocating for fix the mess, then you get to do the new site. I'm putting words in their mouth, but I'm just saying, I did have a conversation independent of that letter, and that was what I was expecting to see in the letter. I'll admit the verbiage is unclear, but if you want another data point, that was kind of the one I was getting.
I mean, okay, Dylan, I'll... Sure. No, I understand. You want to speak to that point?
Well, yes, to the CDFW point, they do actually say, prior to the expansion, twice in this letter. So, that language is used twice, that the remediation work be completed prior to expansion. I don't know if, I can't put words in their mouth either, but I would say that that is more of a, along the line of expanding to two acres. And I've spoken with Dave Mantorne, who has also stated trepidation about approving the expansion prior to Humboldt County approving the expansion. That was an issue with issuing the 1,600, as we had the water rights for the irrigation attached in our 1,600. And he said he would approve everything across the board except for if, prior to Humboldt County approving an interim permit, if we pulled the water, because then that would be a tacit approval of the expansion to two acres from CDFW. From, you know, it would be basically CDFW a tacit approval of the project, and they couldn't do that.
Right.
So, that was more of a line of the expansion is what he spoke to. There's also, excuse me, a timeline that is, you have to propose and stick to a timeline with a 401 permit through the Water Board, whereas we implement, we give them a timeline, it's part of the permit, you have to stick to that. It's, you know, which would be basically what I've provided Steve with, is a slide presentation of the times for each project, and, like I said, 16 to 20 weeks to complete the full remediation package. And for, the Water Board would require us to stick to that, and there's a five-year monitoring following that that we implemented before they even recommended it. And so, that's kind of a standard, and we had put forth a five-year monitoring on the remediation to make sure that it is successful. And so, if the county wanted some sort of assurance, you know, that the work would be completed and be successful, I mean, the monitoring may assuage your fears there? Just I thought I'd bring that point up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sure.
I would just add, if there is a five-year monitoring and you had to be fully remediated, that would take five, you know, you got to be careful when you say remediation, that could be five years, if there's five years of monitoring.
Right.
And I would also say if people, if everyone's worried about it and a bond is the solution, that is something I would support because obviously, the plan is to get the work done.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Well, we are over time, obviously, but I think we may have the makings of a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the project as recommended by staff, including the substitute mitigation measure, and that we add a condition that the applicant is able to start Phase Two upon providing acceptable surety to the county for the completion of the Phase One remediation.
Well said. Do we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Scavdell? Do we have a second?
Point of clarification on your motion before I can second it. When you say authorizing Phase Two before the remediation, what part of Phase Two? All 86,000 square feet? The cav or...
All 86,000 square feet.
Before the remediation's done?
Only if they provide surety to the county for the cost of the remediation.
Let's think about that.
Mr. Lazar.
Just want to point out, if that is the motion that gets accepted and move forward, you wouldn't want to strike the condition that I referenced earlier, Condition 18, because those would sort of interfere with each other. So, just maybe include that, should that be the action.
Remind us what Condition 18...
It's the development timing condition. So, you're essentially substituting Commissioner Scavdell's language for that.
Could I offer, we'd modify Condition 18 to reflect the motion?
Okay. Thank you for that. Well, we have a motion. It has not yet been seconded. We can second it and then have a discussion of it.
I like the idea, still adhering to the language as we understand it. And I would go with what the, what the... Sorry, I forget your name, sir. Behind you.
I'm Dylan Kirkley.
With Mr. Kirkley, in that there was a certain amount, not to exceed that was the way you were explaining and interpreting the language of the CDFW part. So, I like the concept. I think I'd like it better if it was within those parameters.
Can I offer, has the motion been seconded?
It has not.
So, I would offer a second with an amendment, I think is how it would go.
It depends on what you're doing. If you're going in a little different direction, it would be a new motion.
Oh, I would be willing to second if you change the motion to allow operations of Phase Two of what the cav was, and the second part of Phase Two would be implemented at the point in time that remediation work was in monitoring stage. So, that means that the earthwork and the environment was cleaned up, and it's in that monitoring stage.
I believe the staff report already says that, that they could start Phase Two once the remediation's completed and it starts the monitoring stage. It's not five years later. And I was just trying to stick with the staff report in terms of the size of the expansion, which is what came to us. So, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second Commissioner Scavdell's motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? Just to be clear that I understand the motion, there would be, under that motion, the remediation would proceed as it already is, weather permitting and as soon as it can. The cultivation, the entirety of it, could proceed also as soon as practicable, once they had made the financial surety that you're requiring.
That's my intent of the motion. Yes.
Okay. Well, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion before we vote? Then I will call for the questions. Then I will call for the question. Let's have a roll call vote on this. Oh, or, sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Scavdahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
I'll go, Commissioner can go, yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thanks for the good discussion, that was a tricky one. Thank you for your participation and for answering our questions. We are over time, obviously, but we did still have...
I would ask to try to address the public's concerns, because this is something that's already been approved.
I didn't want to hold it up, and I hoped we could get to it a little bit sooner. But with everybody's forgiveness of staying a few minutes longer, could we come back to Brightview Final Map subdivision, which was on consent, but a member of the public pulled it, raised their hands, I think at least one of those numbers there, 2,800 was associated with that.
That was my wife and I calling.
Oh, that was you?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize you were in the room now. Okay, I'm so sorry. And I'm sorry to, well, thank you for coming down. So, is, let's see, I could just have...
You could ask, just to do the hour, ask the member of the public to come on and ask questions, state their concern.
Yeah. I think, I think that's what I'd like to do, because, yes, do the late hour, we're not going to have a full staff report. I would like to invite you up, sir, to have three minutes to express your concerns or ask your questions.
I just have a couple of questions. One, I own the property, my wife and I, right directly behind lots number one and two. And the person that owns the property is asking to shrink the lot lines. If I understand what it says in there, and I'm wondering if he's requesting any kind of setback change or anything like that to get him closer, I'm not quite understanding. I understand they need to get the permit reactivated, and I'm all for that. You know, I'm a contractor, licensed state contractor, and I understand all of it. But I just needed that to be clear. And I also have a 15-foot pile of dirt, 30 feet from behind my house, on the other side of my fence, almost pushing up against my fence, that I'd like to see if the person could just at least knock it down to fence high, because when it blows, and we're kind of close to the ocean, mile and, a quarter mile and a half as a crow flies. It's just, it's just kind of a mess. And I understand the construction process. I know the dirt has to be contained somewhere, because everything's been moved for utilities to go in, and drainage. Looks like a really good job's being done. Have no complaints about anything, just would like that. And maybe a little clarification on what he's asking to shrink those lots down. I don't...
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate your patience in waiting all this time to be able to make those points.
Yeah, I enjoyed it.
We, I don't even know if we have the applicant on the line, I don't think they're in, oh, you are the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm glad you're here, sir.
Yeah, I went out and met him when he had him first.
So, why don't I ask the applicant to clarify those questions?
And maybe that pile of dirt's there because he had to stop because his permit stopped, and work stopped, so.
Yeah.
Okay. The dirt, actually, I have a permit for the last seven, which is the one close to the real road. So whilst that one, I plan to build it in, maybe in a week or two, I start building that one. And then the dirt will move to backfield as a topsoil. So that kind of be, part of it going to be moved. Yeah, but, but that's a concern, I can move from the back, close to the fact.
All right, excuse me, let's not have any dialogue. I just wanted to get the applicant.
So I can, I can solve that problem, yeah. Because I'm going to move the dirt anyway, topsoil.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as far as the question about shrinking lot sizes, I'm not even sure I totally understood the question.
I don't understand that either, you know, but...
Maybe Mr. Johnson can speak to that.
Sure, yeah. Thank you. So, part of the request, which was previously approved, was to have some exceptions to the lot widths. Normally, the lot width is required to be 50 feet. They're asking for a couple of the lots to be less than 50 feet measured at the front setback line.
Yes.
In order to fit them on the parcel. So nothing exterior is proposing to change. They are also asking for a reduced front setback from the interior road. But again, that's not going to change the exterior setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. I think that's, that gives us what we need. Yes, any other public comment on this item before we go back to the Commission? Thank you so much. Seeing none in the room and no hands on Zoom, I will close public comments and just bring this back to the Commission.
Being as I feel that I heard that the citizens' concerns were addressed in staff's presentation, I would move to adopt the resolution, find that the mitigated negative declaration was previously adopted and considered for Project SCH 2015112019, and no further environmental review is required, and make all the required findings for approval of the final map subdivision and planned unit development, and approve the Brightview Major Subdivision and Planned Unit Development subject to the recommended conditions.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Happy to second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scavdahl. Any further discussion on this? Okay, then, all in favor, how about a voice vote? Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, and happy to approve that project. And with that, we are basically at the end. But I do want to quickly, if I might, Commissioner, Director Ford, is there anything you wanted to quickly report on?
I'm not going to tonight.
Okay, we're past time, so I guess we will skip over that, skip over planning discussion items, and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for your good work tonight.
Did we confirm the meeting on the 26th, then, that people can be here and we're going to have that meeting?
Okay, that, that is, yeah. Can you all be here, everybody at this, who's here tonight? Yes. Great, thank you.
It's my intention to be here. I can't make promises.
Okay, hope you can.